And Greg, Councilman Pollock is on a portable microphone tonight. So if anyone in the audience has any trouble hearing, if you'd just kind of give us a signal, that microphone is a little iffy.
Yeah, I apologize.
And just as a reminder, obviously, wear masks, probably, you know, use maybe your outside voices to project a little bit so we can hear into the mic. We do have closed captioning going, so if we speak a little louder and a little slower, then we should do a little better the next time, but that was the first time we had it.
Okay, thank you. All right, if Jordan and Josh are ready, we are ready. Just tell me when. I'm looking at someone's email.
I'm sorry. Yeah, just ignore me.
Ready?
Ready.
All right, fantastic. Thank you. We will call the City of Ferndale Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, August 18th, 2021, to order. It is 6:34 PM. We will begin with a roll call from our city clerk, please.
Commissioner Azar. Commissioner Braga.
Commissioner Braga resigned. He moved out of state.
Oh, that's right. I need to update my template. Commissioner Brazen.
Here.
Commissioner Foster. Commissioner Hagforce.
Here.
Commissioner Hosky.
Here.
Councilman Pollock.
Here.
Commissioner Schwalter.
Here.
And Chair Baker.
Here. All right, Matt, you've got the best one. Commissioners Azar and Foster, let us know that they would be absent this evening. Is there a motion to excuse them?
Motion to excuse Commissioners Foster and Azar by Brazen.
Second, Hagforce.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Motion passes. We'll now move to the approval of the agenda for this evening. Any changes to the agenda from our city staff?
None this evening.
All righty. Then I would look for a motion and a second to approve this evening's agenda. Hosky makes a motion to approve the agenda?
Second from Brazen.
Thank you. That's a motion from Commissioner Hosky with a second from Commissioner Brazen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Thank you. The motion passes. All right, we'll move to the approval of the minutes. We have considera-- item number 3A, excuse me, consideration of the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of July 21st, 2021. Any comments, changes, edits to those minutes?
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Second, Hagforce.
Thank you. That was a motion by Councilman Pollock with a second by Commissioner Hagforce. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm losing my words. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. The motion passes. All righty. Take this off to explain. Move to our call to audience. Item number four. Call to audience is a time for anyone in the audience to address the Planning Commission on anything that's not on the agenda tonight. So as a reminder, we have no action items on the agenda tonight, but we do have two discussion items coming up. There's a discussion of a proposed retail restaurant use at 411 West Marshall, as well as a discussion of a potential rezoning at 1111 West Nine Mile. Again, those are not action items, but they are discussion items. So if you have comments on either of those, we'll do discussion and comments when we get to those. But if there's anyone here-- oh, I'm sorry, we also have an update, Planning Commission year-end report at the end of the meeting under administrative items. But if there's anyone here who wants to address the Planning Commission on anything else, anything that's not on the agenda, you are welcome to come to the podium. Please state your name for the record, name and location or address. What are we doing now, Jordan? I always say name and address, but it got changed to location.
None are necessary.
Oh, okay. Name and address for the record. And you've got three minutes to address us on anything not on the agenda? All righty. In that case, we will get right to discussion item 5A. This is a discussion of a proposed retail/restaurant use at 411 West Marshall. We will begin with an introduction from our city staff. We'll then have the applicant share anything that he would like to, either on the screen or verbally at the podium. We'll then take some questions and comments from the public if anyone's here with questions on that project. And then I'm sure we'll have some questions here from the Planning Commission, too. So we'll begin with Justin Lyons.
Good evening, everyone. Justin Lyons, Planning Manager for the city. So for those that may not be familiar, Planning Commission does allow for discussion items for interested folks that are looking at new projects, proposing rezonings, a number of things. And so generally, the parameters for those items are, you know, an applicant. In the ordinance, it states the applicant can provide a concept plan and a letter describing the project, basically as a way to, you know, start a conversation with the commission and the community and hear feedback about initial proposal before doing a formal, full application. So there are two of those items tonight, as previously stated. This particular item located at 411 West Marshall is a proposed retail/restaurant concept. The applicant can explain the concept much better than me, but generally, you know, it was proposed as converting the existing residential structure to sort of small café/wine boutique type of use, so a mixture of some retail and sort of restaurant type use, but not really a big food service component. Their interest is in bringing a neighborhood type of amenity, something that doesn't exist over in that area right now on West Marshall, something that sort of fits the intent of the mixed-use district, which is where the property is located just east, or excuse me, just west of Woodward, between Woodward and Ellen. For this type of use, you know, it really depends on the final concept that's proposed and what to submit, but generally, this district does permit retail and restaurant type of use. If there were outdoor seating, usually that does trigger a special land use application, which requires a public hearing process at the Planning Commission and city council. So more steps with that on top of a site plan that would be submitted. But so staff had a preliminary conversation with the applicant about some of the limitations of the site, but also just, you know, sort of a use that's not really there in that neighborhood right now. And so staff kind of said, you know, it might make sense to talk about this with the community, with the Planning Commission, and learn more about some considerations about parking. It is a site that has some challenges there, and so I think the applicant can give more context, but that's the initial information from staff.
Thank you. All right, let us welcome the applicant up. I actually talked to Eli yesterday. He had a couple-- oh, turn it up. He had a couple of questions about the process at the meeting, because even though you've been a resident of Ferndale for a long time, doesn't mean you've been in front of the Planning Commission or the council or anything, right? So I thought that was a good question, and this is the time where Eli, you or your architect, however you'd like to do it, would share information about the project with the commission, anything about the vision of the project and some of the conversations around parking that I know you're having. And then we'll get some questions and comments from the public if there's anyone here, and then we'll have some questions for you, too, after that. So turn it over to you, Eli.
Site plan pulled up if you need to go through any of it.
Yeah, forgive me, Kate. I'm going to come up here.
You have something to hand out? Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Eli. Thank you. Got it. Thank you. And we'll make sure that we share this with staff, too. Thank you.
I am Eli, Eli Boat, and I'm a resident of Ferndale for the past 12 years, and I may add, a big advocate of the town and its community. And I reside at-- thank you. I reside at 401 West Marshall. It's an old storefront that we have converted into a living space for us. There's myself and my wife and our little daughter. She's 12 years old. And the idea of moving to Ferndale and being part of that community has always appealed to me for the past 20 years, and I finally made the move back in 2005. The idea of live and work in the same place have always appealed to me as well, but I have not really been able to do it until maybe this opportunity presented itself when we bought the house next door to us at 411. And we decided, my wife and I, my wife is also, she works in automotive industry, and she has an import company for wine, and I have Eli Wine Company, and I've been with Eli Wine Company. I launched Eli Company in 1991 in Royal Oak and moved to Birmingham in 2014, so I've been there for seven years now. And we're really Uber specialists in a way. We specialize in certain categories of wines, and so our market is not only local, but also national, some international. And accordingly, my wife launched a company to import wines back in 2011, and she conducts business in nine states, but her business is an import business where she sells to distributors. And so we discussed the issue of converting the house that we bought into a meeting place for some of our importers, that they can come and taste what we have and what we carry. And of course, you know, everything that I do, I told Kate yesterday that I'm not really irrelevant to people's daily practices or daily habits or daily table. I'm more of part of their lifestyle. So I get less people visiting, but typically a more extensive conversation. And the idea is to take that house and convert it to a place where our people can, from other states, can come and meet with us, and they can sample our wines. But also, part of that traction for us of Ferndale, but specifically West Marshall, this is a neighborhood that could belong to really any great big city. It could be New York, it could be Chicago, it could be overseas, anywhere. So the idea is to create a place that fits that kind of a neighborhood where we have it as part of the community. People can come and they can partake in what we do. So here's what we're thinking, is to create a space that is with a small footprint that will have a café more for carryouts and, say, like an ice cream place, pastries, a little bit of just finger foods. And also, in addition to that, we have a wine rack, if you may. It's not really a wine shop. If you want to see a wine shop, come and see me in Birmingham. That's a wine shop. It's a wine rack for the neighborhood. Our intention is not necessarily to appeal to a big market. It's really our market, the Woodward Farms area. The stretch between Woodward and Ellen, it has a lot of potential to it. And we thought if we can put a place that is both visually appealing and has a value to it to the community as well, that would be a node to create more activities. The-- accordingly, I retained Ish Rafiuddin, who's an architect that got my attention. He worked in Core City, and he's responsible for some projects nationally and also internationally, places like Beirut and Istanbul. And his sensibilities were absolutely in sync with our sensibility, which is to take on a site and convert it, but yet preserve the integrity of that site and still preserve-- him and I were talking today, and I was saying to him, to preserve something, a part of our past, it doesn't have to be grandiose. It could be just a moment that defines who we are. And that dwelling, I would not want to take it down. I would want to definitely enhance it in a way where it's preserved, and we can all walk by it, and we can see that this is our past and this is part of our future as well. I think that's, in a nutshell, what I'm intending to do, and feel free to ask me a question, and I'd like to introduce Ish as well. Ish Rafiuddin, he is the architect.
Welcome, Ish.
Hi, hello. Thank you for having me. Yeah, so my name is Ishtiak Rafiuddin. I'm a design architect, and I moved to Detroit, actually, a few years ago, and I, before that, I practiced in New York. I'm working on, with several developers in Detroit, and also I have another client in Ferndale. And a lot of the projects I'm working on are what I call adaptive reuse, where you take a building that was designed for a different use, and you adapt it for, you know, a more contemporary or relevant use to, you know, our lifestyle now. And there are a lot of those buildings in Detroit. So there's two projects which you may know of. One is called Takoi. It's a restaurant in Corktown. So I designed Takoi. That was in 2017. And then a second restaurant called Magnet, which is now called Barda. It's in the Core City neighborhood of Detroit. Both of them were designed as garage structures, and now they're, you know, vibrant restaurants. So I think that's what got Eli's intention, and that's what connected us. He visits both restaurants quite often, and that's where we actually first met. So, and so he came to me with this project, and essentially, the idea is, you know, he came to me and said, I live in a mixed-use one property, and I, you know, I've acquired the property next door. It's also mixed-use one. And then we talked about mixed-use one, and the idea for mixed-use one is, I would say, neighborhood-friendly commerce. And so we explore, we're exploring ideas on how to develop this property next door. And Eli, as I understand, you've been there for decades, so he's really committed to the neighborhood and that corner. And so, and I'm committed to, you know, good design, internationally relevant design. I'm also working with, if you guys have noticed, but Western Markets, they're one of my clients. If you've noticed some interior design changes, we're working on that, you know, sequentially, because it's not difficult, it's not easy to renovate a western supermarket when it's in operation, but there, we've been making changes, and there'll be more changes to improve, you know, its quality as well as aesthetics. So, you know, here we are, we're, you know, this property next to the property that Eli lives in, and it's mixed-use. It's a small property. It's only 500 square feet on the ground floor. That's all we want to occupy. We don't want to expand its footprint. We will not use a second floor for any relevant use. It will be for storage, for his business. And so within that 500 square feet, we want to do something charming, something that, you know, is a real benefit to the neighborhood, and something that speaks to not just Ferndale, but to Detroit, Michigan, but as well as the world at large, because his business is, you know, I would say worldly, you know, in the sense that I know Eli travels around the world looking for the best wines. His wife, as he said, you know, is importing wine from Spain. So it's something that, you know, it's almost, you know, for us, a way to connect all of that and bring it back to this corner of 411 and 401. So I think that that is, in essence, what we want to do. When I, when we first spoke, you know, I told Eli, I looked into, you know, the constraints, and I told Eli, you know, like, this is mixed-use, that's great, but we have some constraints in terms of parking, and we looked at, actually, all of your mixed-use one properties. I would say 70% of them have a similar condition, and I, you know, and we came to the conclusion that we have to basically talk to you about this, because if that's the real intent, and we love that as a possibility, and I think Marshall is a great street for it, then, then, you know, how can we, how can, you know, we make that happen, and how can we collectively, you know, figure that out? So I think that's why we're here. Have I answered?
Yes, yeah. And just to touch a little bit, just two minutes.
Eli, can I have you with the microphone? Sorry. Thank you. Yep.
Eli Wine Company, separate from what I'm doing, it has nothing to do with tonight. Eli Wine Company is known nationally. Punch Magazine, which is a James Beard magazine, named it as one of the five businesses in America that dictate taste in wine, of course, not in other things. And we have a national, international recognition as well. So the idea is not necessarily to create a place that brings traffic. It's more to bring renown. And that really comes from my commitment to Ferndale itself. I remember 15 years ago, when I was in Royal Oak, I had a gentleman come to see me to, intending to open a place in Royal Oak, and I talked him out of opening in Royal Oak and took him to Ferndale, and I walked around town on Sunday, and that became the Ken, the Ken Schram Miri. And so I've been advocating for businesses to come here, and finally, I decided, okay, I'm talking about a place, and I have to be frank with you, too. I, in the past two years, well, since COVID, beginning of COVID, I've been looking for a space to expand in Ferndale, but it has become really impossible to find any place. So I stayed close to home, and this is the project. You may call it vanity project, because it is. I don't intend to really make money off it, but it would really be great to have a small place where Kate could stop by, or Greg, or Matthew, who is my neighbor, or Dale here, who is here, to just share a glass of wine and take a bottle home, or a coffee, or share pastries. So it's not intended to be something that would create much of traffic and therefore doesn't really require much parking either. So that's my intention. It's not, it's truly not about making money. With that kind of license and with that kind of setting, you know, I'd be better served if the money is the concern, is to go someplace else. So that's all I have to say. If you have any questions, please ask me. I'd like to eliminate.
Great. Thanks, Eli. Thanks, Ish. We are going to start by seeing if there's anyone in the audience tonight who has questions or comments on this discussion item. Again, there's no action this evening, but if there's anyone who wanted to address a question or a comment to the Planning Commission on the discussion of our retail/restaurant use at 411 West Marshall, come on up to the podium. You can state your name and address, and Hosky?
Actually, wasn't coming up here for that, but since you guys redid Marshall, it's very interesting. My name is Mike Adjemi, 476 West Troy.
I'm sorry, could you see into the microphone?
My name is Mike Adjemi at 476 West Troy.
Thanks, Mike.
I didn't come up here for that, but after hearing, I think someone needs to say something. They redid Marshall. It's very congested now. You've lost at least three to four parking spots, okay? Honestly, I'm thinking of you, Eli. If these parking spots are all filled up, how are the people going to come and park there?
I need, I'm sorry. Mike?
People, people want to come to your shop who are not residents of Ferndale.
Mike, I need you to address your comments to the Planning Commission, please. Thank you.
So if the parking is filled, where are people going to park? Okay? Because that's a residential area, and they already took three to four spots away. I mean, it's a good thing, it's a great idea, but I mean, I always think of the residents. I mean, because these are the people who live here, and I don't know if it's going to be fair to him, fair to the residents, but parking would be a great issue. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the commission on this item?
I'll step here.
Wait, Eli, I'm sorry, I just want to see if we've got anyone else in the audience. All right, this is the main discussion point this evening, because this is a permitted use in this district, so we'll have Eli and Ish come back up, and let's talk about parking. This is the thing that I told Eli yesterday, we would do our best as a commission to get some direction to him and his, and his architect and to our staff about parking in the neighborhood. So it seems like we have a conversation that we've had before about sort of the trade-offs of open space and green space versus parking. Ish has brought a sketch of what might fit. There would be some dimensional variances required in order to make that existing driveway usable, but that aside, turning the whole backyard into parking is really the only way that they fit parking on site. So I wanted to ask Eli and Ish about sort of this design, as well as any conversations that you may have had with neighbors about shared parking and using existing resources that are already in the neighborhood.
Well, thank you very much for the question. I think it's obviously very relevant, and that's why I wanted to be involved. So we, yeah, so I proposed maybe a couple of strategies for how to park in the backyard, and I would, and I would just, you know, like, if this is a mixed, you know, mixed-use one district, I believe, again, 70% of the lots there are that narrow, then this would be a strategy that anyone that wishes to take advantage of the mixed-use one would have to do, which is to park in the back. And I believe we can fit four spots, and I've considered, you know, traffic equations and turning radiuses. So it's a possibility, I think, in which case we would, you know, need your blessings on. We're also in conversation with neighboring owners who have excess parking at hours that would complement the hours of operation for this business. So we're also looking into that, and I believe that's under the shared parking kind of ordinance that you have in your code. So that is also something that we're looking at. Based on the size of the building, which is 500 square feet, I believe, in my opinion, we would need two parking spots based on the amount of guest space. So the 500 square feet would not all be for guests, maybe half of it would be. So that's just my estimation, but we haven't, we haven't started the design process, because I really would like to be, you know, responsible to Eli in terms of just not going too far and having, you know, some direction from you. So those are the two things, you know, that are at play in my mind.
Thanks, Ish. Justin, how many, how many spaces, just estimated, in MX would this require?
So it sort of depends on what the net usable square footage is.
Okay.
But, you know, I think we talked about it, a range, it could depend, you know, it's the space for like a restaurant type of use or a carryout type of restaurant are a little bit different. So, you know, carryout is six per service counter. You know, typical type of restaurant is one per 100 square feet. Retail is one per 250 square feet. So it sort of depends on what the floor plan is, but, you know, I think it would be, you know, less than 10 is what it seemed like to me, depending on the scenario, but.
So based on the use, we're talking like two to six or two to 10?
Right.
Thank you.
I think probably on the lower, the lower end.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Oh, if I may, yeah. So is it Tony that had the point? Your name?
Michael.
Michael has a good point. The, since the resurfacing of the street, the parking, the street parking has been reduced, and I think it's designed in a way where it accommodates bigger cars, and I noticed that we've lost, I counted, two spaces between La Prairie and Allen Street. That's one point. The second point is, everybody on the street that I know, they have parking, private parking. So mostly, the street parking is for visitors. That happens with us as well. We have visitor, which doesn't happen very often, overnight, they park in the street. So that's an issue, of course. The third point is, we intend to speak to everybody on the street to get their input and what they think. So I, as Eli, and my family, raising a child there, we're committed to be in there, and we're going to do what's good for our street, and we're going to be there for a long time. So you have my word on that as we progress. That's, my intention is not necessarily, I'm not a cupboard bagger. I'm committed. So I'm committed to find a solution for it.
Thanks, Eli. I know we've got commissioners who live in the neighborhood. I'm not too far away. So let's, I guess, we'll start with Justin, see if you've got any questions or comments for the applicant.
Yeah, so I know you said you were going to speak to your neighbors. Have you spoken with the person directly behind your home and also the person directly to the right of the space yet?
So the person behind us, he's in the process of moving-- of moving, not sure if he is going to sell the house or rent it out.
Okay.
That's right behind us. And across the street, are you referring to the yellow building?
No, the home directly to the right of the project site. So, yeah, to the west of it, correct. So I don't know what address.
Yeah, so one person we've talked to.
421, thank you.
Across the street from, next to 411? Yes, I have.
Okay, and they're on board with the idea as well? Or they're accommodating to the idea that you have proposed?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are. And if any of you can have them come here and have their input as well.
Okay. And then just a couple of kind of comments about the project as you guys are developing it. If the parking is indeed in the back, I would like to kind of see some kind of a barrier or something to kind of just, again, protect your neighbors from, you know, lights. And it doesn't feel like someone's driving in their backyard or anything. And then how are you going to accommodate the home to be ADA accessible? Because currently, it's not.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
How are you going to make sure that the home or that the business is ADA accessible? So if someone's in a wheelchair or has a pastry.
Well, that's, Ish is going to address that as we get the, we can go down that road a little bit more without being committed at this moment. Do we just want to?
Okay, so it's doable with the existing structure?
Yeah, I mean, we will design a ramp, something that is... Is there anywhere to get an image up there? Or I can pass it to, I can maybe pass it to you.
You can pass it? Sure.
Okay. Okay.
Thanks. The architect is sharing a picture of a ramp that he did in a project in Detroit.
This is a nationally noted project, that Ish.
Thanks, Eli.
So we would do a design specific to the project.
Okay.
And we'd have to do a ramp, obviously. And then we would have an accessible bathroom inside as well for that, yeah.
And Justin, what's the setback allowance for mixed use in that site? Does it have to be, I mean, right now, the homes are pretty much all on the same line.
Since it's existing, you know, unless they add it on, you know, you can add an ADA ramp into the setback. But the setback for this district, I think it's, for 80% of the lot, it should be zero to 10 feet, I believe it is.
Okay.
But that doesn't really come into play unless they were to do a major addition to the front.
Okay. Anything else? Commissioner Haskins first?
No, just a moment. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Haskins?
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I think some of the comments around screening and, you know, being courteous neighbors, including, you know, yourself included, obviously, being right there on the street. So screening of the parking and that sort of thing, I think in order for, you know, that commercial node right there is a great little mixed-use node that is really underutilized. And so I think that a project like what you're proposing could be great for that little neighborhood. I think any use is going to run into this parking issue. And so I think what you've proposed is really creative ways to address it. I think when you come back, whichever path you choose, whether it's collaborating with other parking options or adding parking on site, having information around, you know, your business hours and when parking would be in high demand and what that looks like in the neighborhood, I think is always helpful context to understand what the parking demand will be for your neighbors. But yeah, it sounds like a great little project. And I appreciate your commitment to your neighborhood.
Thank you. If I may, just comment on that. You are spot on because I looked at that corner as a note for not only in terms of as people turn on West Marshall and having something that gets their attention visually and in a way that's attractive to have a social unfolding, if you may. My commitment to that street, let me take you back a few years ago. We have a day we call the Day of St. George, which is a day of books and roses. It's the International Book Day, April 23rd, where Shakespeare's birthday. And we created two or three events to benefit the library. And that's a day that's celebrated in the northeast of Spain and Barcelona, where they have the bookseller set up stands and they autograph and they talk about their books. My vision is the same event that we've done for the library and at the library to bring it to that street. Can you imagine stands with authors and writers and roses and people exchanging books and roses? What a beautiful thing that is. That corner, and I've watched it for the past 12 years, and has really transformed because of the change in the demographics and the Woodward Farms. We have younger people, very thoughtful people. They take time to enjoy every second in life. They walk by, their walk is deliberate, their walk is slow. And I would love to see a corner with art at the corner where people can sit down and meet their neighbors that they haven't met or they haven't talked to in a long time. And what a great thing to do, to have a place that's aesthetically, with Ash's aesthetic, that him and I, we've talked back and forth for a long time. Anybody can put up a building, but a building that's engaging and defining to not just themselves, but to the whole community, that's not an easy thing to do. And it could be done modestly and it could be done in a grandiose way. That's, it's not an issue of expenditure. It's an issue of sensibilities. And we're going to put something there along those lines. So it is going to be a defining issue to that stretch between Allen and Woodward. That's the spirit of it. If there's any problem, it's a challenge and we'll overcome it. And what makes it that much more unique. And we're up to the challenge and we can make it happen. But I'm hoping that we engage you in a way where we can all benefit from it.
Thanks, Eli. I want to see if we've got any other questions. Commissioner Brison?
Do you have, what are your intended hours of operation?
So the intention is based on the business that we're doing, which is Kerry Coffee, pastry with a certain set of foods. So it could be, I'm thinking of across the street to Mary's, you know, Montessori School. And so it would be more like 10 o'clock or even 11 o'clock to allow for parents to be able to come and drop off their kids and but also be able to grab a coffee or pastry and exchange small conversations or big conversations. And so 10 o'clock and would stop most likely 9:00, 9:30.
Eli, anything else, Commissioner Brison?
No, thanks.
And Commissioner Shalater?
Yeah, I have, there's a few issues I have with this. First of all, I love the idea of this. This is one of the corners that annoys me the most in Ferndale when I walk by this crazy, underutilized corner. It's right around my house and I go by walks all the time. And I just really hate how you have the yellow building that just is falling apart. And then, and it just is very underutilized. So I'm glad that something is happening there. I do question the site, though, because it is really narrow. So you're providing enough accessible spots. You're providing some handicap accessible spots at the back of the lot, but you're not providing a walkway for someone who could be in a wheelchair to get to the front of the building. So they would, so like, you're, they would, someone has to kind of like run the gauntlet and hopefully there's not someone driving down the driveway when you're coming to the front of the building.
If I can interrupt, I'm sorry. In this situation, we would actually enter from the back.
The center, okay.
So you would not, you would not, you would not be traversing on the driveway to get to the building. So we would have to address that. But you're absolutely right that we would have to do that. But we, I, unfortunately, we haven't gotten that far because we were just trying to address the parking.
Yeah. And I do worry, I mean, I know that you showed a picture of a ramp, but that is not what the ramp would look like. It's 32 inches up above grade, looking at. So that's 32 feet long ramp, at least, not counting the switchbacks. So 32 feet is a massive ramp. It would take up a large portion of the site and it would probably cut into your circulation right there. So if it's in the back and if it's in the front, it would take up most of the front yard. And then also, it's kind of the same thing in reverse if the entrance is in the back. Because you said this is for community use, for people to walk up and use. And so you're making, so you're making everyone walk the gauntlet of cars when they're trying to go into the site instead of walking into what would be the most... It would be very, the front face feels like that would be.
If I could address that, there would be an entrance in the front and the back.
Okay, so there'd be an entrance in both?
Okay.
Yeah, there's no reason why that would not be possible.
And so I was looking at the floor plan of it. And are you guys going to be preparing food on site? Or is it just going to be giving up, using prepackaged pastries or prepackaged coffee and whatnot?
Let me unpack toward preparing food. There are many ways to prepare food. Plating is different than cooking. If you're asking the question of whether it'll be cooking, not. There isn't going to be any cooking. Plating, there are many creative ways that we do it. And this, there lies the uniqueness of the business as well.
Okay, so you don't, so we're not, so there might not have to be like a kitchen, per se, on the first floor that would have to be a health department kitchen.
No, I don't foresee a kitchen at all.
Okay.
So that would change ventilation? Is that kind of where you were heading?
No, there's no place for the kitchen to go on the first floor. There, because if there's entrance to the back, you'd either be walking through the kitchen or someone would have to go through the kitchen to go to the bathroom. And so, and or the very front lobby would have to be the kitchen. It's doable, I think, but it's, it would just be a consideration. But, okay, yeah, those are my primary concerns. I mean, you have enough space to make that an ADA bathroom, which is fine. And overall, though, like I really would like to see something happen with this corner. It's, it's, for the longest time, I always thought that your house was a business. It was just never used until I realized it was a house.
Well, it's, part of it is actually, a third of it is, it's, it's, my wife is import business. That's what it is. Yeah, so that's her office, if you may.
Okay.
As well as our home, yeah. And you're welcome, by the way, my wife and I, we've always thought of putting in green light, red light. And if the green light is on, knocking the door. You're welcome to come and have a glass of wine with us. There's always some wine in the house, so I can assure you of that.
We should adopt that in Ferndale.
And there's always some food. And if it's red, don't knock on the door.
Councilor Talika, any questions?
I do, but you might want to think about a different color than red if you've been to Amsterdam.
Yes, that's what I told my wife. He said to her, there's a reference to that. That's not so savory. In fact, before you go on, Greg, I don't know if you knew this, but the place used to be a drugstore on one side, which was called Weir's. The middle space used to be a shoe repair. But the west space used to be AMP. And it was their meat market. So that would really sort of redefine the idea of meat markets.
Yeah. There's information on that.
Tony John, guys, Tony John.
At the historical museum about the AMP market. So my first question is going to be to Justin. Do these proposed projects, does this proposed project require any change in the zoning?
It doesn't require a rezoning. It just would require, you know, consideration about a parking reduction, which there's a criteria for that. And then there is an opportunity with, in the access management ordinance or F226, where it talks about where, you know, during certain conditions, you can reuse an existing driveway that may not meet existing standards. So that could be another one. We haven't got into materials, but there's no rezoning or there could be a special land use for the outdoor seating, but that's not like a change to zoning. It's just an extra step to go to City Council.
My next question, you, this to Eli or the architect. You mentioned that you would be putting in ADA accessible ramp to the facility. Are there any other exterior changes that you're intending to do? Any modifications?
I think by and large, you would like to retain the character of the house. However, if the, if the use, and this is where the idea of adaptive reuse, you know, comes into play. But if there are certain requirements for the cafe that requires changes, maybe more glass, you know, something to that effect, then I would definitely consider it, yes. But it would, but my goal would be to retain, you know, the existing qualities of the house. Because it is a house, yes.
Yeah, I didn't know if you were intending on like removing the porch or extending the porch, you know?
So the, there is a porch, I believe, which is an addition, which is in the front of the property. We are considering removing that. And so, and it's, right now, I guess it's a three seasons porch. So we are considering removing that. That one does not have, the foundation does not continue to the basement, in that case. And the structure does have a basement. So we are considering removing that. And in its place, we are considering, we are considering an entrance that would be more fitting to the cafe use. Because I think right now, it's, the porch is, it doesn't necessarily work functionally. And that's the other concern, yeah.
The other thing is...
Can you speak in the mic?
Yeah. The other sort of addendum to what Ish said, and this is all a conversation back and forth, is to really the front of the house, where the porches will come down and will add a feature that is basically to address all the concerns, the front entrance and the ADA issues. But also, keep in mind that that is really the face of the place. So it has to be done in a way where it showcases the house itself, but also inviting to people passerby and engaging as well. And I think in my own opinion, that portion, I, maybe I shouldn't tell you that, but I, you know, because it's still half-baked. This is my, my I am pay moment, you know? It's, you know, la louvre, you know, with the pyramid. But we can do it. We can do it. So it has to be in a way that people go by, drive by. It's attractive, but yet functional. It's not gratuitous at all, whatever we do. So I just want to tell you, that's my intention to go down that way.
Bicycle parking?
Of course, yeah.
Where?
I haven't considered it, but every project I've done has bicycle parking.
Okay.
And then we have the advantage of the, uh, 150 feet next door, the, the four, 401.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I have no issue with, um, increasing the amount of paved, of pavement on the property. But I would want a, a solid rainwater mitigation plan, whether that be water draining into rainbeds or flower beds or permeable pavers or an underground retention system, anything to avoid the water that currently falls on the property from going directly into the storm drains.
That's, that's a great comment. We have considered this and we would like to keep, we, we want to address that, you know, and, and my goal is to use a permeable pavers or other permeable, uh, surfaces. And we have some details for that, cause I've done this before on other projects. And I think one of the, one of the largest constraints of this region and, and obviously recently with the flooding, that's a real, real necessity, and I think that's, yeah, so we will, we will address that. And in fact, I prefer soft surfaces, you know, over hard surfaces in terms of just sustainability. So I think that, yes, that we will address that.
Okay, excellent, cause, uh, yeah, right now, there's a whole backyard there that's absorbing rainwater, but if you pave it over, it's all just going to end up in the sources.
Yeah, we, we would not do paving in a conventional sense.
Okay. So I just want to add, end on a comment. You know, for decades, small business, neighborhood business operators, operated successfully without the need for parking, but over the past 40 years, we've become an auto-centric society where people are jumping into their cars and driving two blocks, where in the past, people walked. And, and I'm guilty of this. I get your vision, um, and, and what you want to do here. And I can see where 90% of your clientele is going to come from the neighborhoods. I don't see the need for a dozen parking spaces just in case one or two days during the year, you know, you might need them. You know, we need to get away from this mega mall mentality of building all of this parking space, you know, for the holiday season. And then, you know, nine, 11 months out of the year, it's just paved parking. But I do want to see more, and I want to encourage more neighborhood businesses like this, small little neighborhood businesses. My grandparents, um, in the 1920s and 30s ran a, a little store out of their home. You know, right out the front, their living room was the store and they lived in the back, and it was right in the middle of a block. That was very common. There's no reason why it can't be common again today.
Thanks, Councilman.
Thank you.
I think my, my, uh, my comments are, are similar, um, to what my colleagues have said. I think shared parking is going to be really important. It's going to make the site more functional and it's going to make it clear to your, to your clients, you know, where their options are. So just knowing, knowing the neighborhood and, and knowing West Marshall and also knowing your business as well as you do, Eli. You know, knowing what those peak hours, like Commissioner Haskins said, are and where they overlap with the peak on-street parking, you know, if everyone's coming home from work, you know, you're going to need some shared parking somewhere between like five and eight in the evening if you're open or something, right? Like you, you kind of know where your, where your congestion is going to happen. I think one of the other things you might want to consider when it comes to shared parking is, you know, I realize, you know, Noria, maybe there are sometimes, obviously she'll just walk next door, but the, um, you know, any other staff members, if there's, whether it's one of the apartment buildings nearby or the Montessori or someone, if there's someone who has a parking space or two that can be secured for staff parking, just so that you know that you've always got a few spaces for guests. I think that will, that will help us consider a parking waiver or a parking reduction. The ability to have that ADA accessible entry and restroom is, is fantastic. I'm really glad you guys are considering that, um, and taking it seriously. And then thinking about if there's outdoor seating, whether it's in front or in back, obviously impacts the parking conversation, you know? So if there's a vision for outdoor seating in front, um, that's one thing. If there's a vision for outdoor seating in back, that, you know, is, is going to come back to what's the parking plan? So I think when you guys come back, I would just want to see that, that plan and that you've got some conversations or some kind of agreements in place with, with neighboring. Like, let's use the paved surface that we've got in the neighborhood already and use it wisely. And then, yeah, I guess that's sort of the biggest. I want to make sure and check in with you guys and with, with, with Justin. Is there anything else that you were looking for, specific feedback and direction on, Justin? When it comes to, I mean, parking is the main question before the planning commission, because it's a permitted use in the district. Obviously, a number of other things related to access and design are handled administratively on a, on a renovation, so.
Right, yeah, that's great, direction from the commission, so staff appreciates it. Obviously, applicant appreciates it. It really was primarily related to parking and then, you know, talking more about ADA and pedestrian circulation and, and hours, which we haven't really got too deep into yet. But bicycle parking, of course, if you're going to have a parking reduction, that's something that goes hand in hand with that. So I think I heard everything that I needed to and can work with the applicant on next, next steps.
Okay, Eli and Ish, um, any final questions or anything you were hoping to hear from us that we haven't touched on tonight?
No, I, I think, uh, yeah, I mean, it's great to have real feedback from you all and the audience. And, um, yeah, thank you for hearing us, I really appreciate it.
And I, I just want to say that, you know, I am very proud of this community. It has always been visionary and, uh, whatever we do, and hopefully we can do it together, I'll make the community proud of who we are as well. It's, uh, it's something that I'm, I'm, uh, very adamant about, uh, living life with meaning and doing what needs to be done that enhances the heart, the soul, and the mind. But that's what's enduring. So I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Eli, it's great to see you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, oh, Eli, yes, thank you, do you, do you want your books back?
I'll take some.
Books, and then we've got some of the other handouts that we'll make sure the staff has a copy of as well. Thank you. I want to make sure you get the books, thank you. Oh, that's for us, and we'll keep it for Justin, too.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to item number five B. This is the discussion of a potential rezoning at 1111 West Nine Mile. This is the corner of Nine Mile and Pinecrest. Similar to the prior item, we'll start with an introduction from our city staff. We'll then have the applicant come up and share any information that they've brought tonight. We'll take questions and comments from the audience. And then we will, um, work to answer those questions and comments and have a discussion as a commission.
Hello again, uh, Justin Lyon, Planning Manager, just for the record one more time. Thank you for that introduction. So generally, staff's been having conversations about this property at the corner of Pinecrest and West Nine Mile. Currently zoned mixed-use two, it's adjacent to R1 single-family residential to the south and southwest. And then, um, C2 general commercial to the east. For those that may not be familiar, those are city zoning districts, and there are a number of permitted uses and regulations that go with each of those districts. The applicant's proposal is for what's, what falls under the, a lodging facility in the city zoning ordinance. So that is not actually permitted in the mixed-use two district. And so in conversations with the applicant, you know, uh, they had been talking about, you know, that this site could make sense for this type of use. And, um, you know, knowing that it's not a permitted use there, we started to look at, you know, what are, what are the options? And usually that's when I, again, try and bring applicants to the planning commission if there's a rezoning or potential planned unit development or anything like that involved. And so it is an interesting site in that it is, you know, it is wide, in that it's 200 feet wide on the Nine Mile frontage, but it is not real deep, I would say, on being roughly 60 to 63 feet deep. And also interesting, on the west side, there is a, a public alley that is utilized by the adjacent apartment building. And so that is actually, I think, an asset probably to this site. But anyway, uh, so, um, you know, talked about, you know, how there's not really lodging facilities in the community, particularly on Nine Mile. You know, obviously, short-term rentals have been, you know, more of a, a recent conversation in the community and some, and the city's updated some ordinance related to that, with some of those short-term rentals being neighborhoods. So, you know, we talked about, you know, if there's a place for a lodging facility, you know, somewhere on a major street, you know, maybe that helps bring some of those people wanting to visit Ferndale outside of the neighborhoods, but, um. So the applicant just talking more, wanted to get some feedback from the planning commission. Because, you know, there's not, the site's not totally designed, obviously, this is just conceptual, but it seemed as though with this type of use, it would fall under the city's enhanced notice policy. So as a reminder, that requires a letter being mailed to property owners and occupants within 500 feet of the site. So staff did mail that, and then there was a project page on the city's website, which frankly, doesn't have a lot of information other than what's on the agenda, just because it's that early in the project stage. So more information on that will be added as available. Lodging facilities in the city's zoning ordinance do require one, um, parking space per guest bedroom. I don't know that we've seen a hotel since I've been at least on staff anyway, so. And, you know, staff and applicant have been talking about, you know, the differences between the C2 commercial zoning versus mixed-use two, the differences there. And so we'll probably get into more of that soon. And just, you know, we did, as a community, just updated the mixed-use two zoning ordinance to include a lot more design elements, make sure there's not blank walls on Nine Mile and Pinecrest, make sure that there's some private open area. And so, you know, there, there's a, there's a balance and also architectural compatibility. A lot of those building material and articulation requirements that the city's updated recently with more high-quality building materials, those would be required for this type of project as well. So I think I've said enough, this is enough for the applicant to discuss, so I'm here for, for follow-up questions.
Thanks, Justin. Alrighty, I will welcome the applicant to come up and share any materials that you may have. Justin can help with the, uh, the technology as needed.
This is, uh, Michael Ferlito of the Ferlito Group. This is just the PDF that was included in that.
Right, thank you.
Welcome, Mike, good to see you.
How you guys doing? My name is, uh, Michael Ferlito. I'm a, uh, I always introduce myself now as a new data, data of a brand-new little girl. So that's first and foremost. I'm a downtown Ferndale business owner, have been for about five or six years now. And I'm also a real estate developer. I am the individual that took away the Motorama Hotel from Ferndale and replaced it with a very successful apartment building that has now just reached actually 95% occupancy, so 35 more residents in Ferndale, very exciting. So, um, so first and foremost, this product really came from, honestly, out of COVID. You know, with the work from home for many large corporations, there's been a huge influx of people that are just, they call them digital nomads. People that are traveling to unique destinations like Ferndale, Detroit, anywhere around the country, and working from home. And, um, really, this project is designed for that reason. It's about 28-unit, three-story building. We have 30 or more parking spaces underneath the building. And, um, you know, it's, it's for the digital nomad. We think, well, we know, there's a lot of demand for visitors to be in Ferndale and there's not really a lot of, um, quality professionally ran, um, options for people to come and enjoy the amenities and support the downtown businesses. So first and foremost, I, I know there's many concerns with something like this when you're proposing a hotel. And I'd like to have the opportunity to maybe answer those concerns before, you know, people might think, you know, I'm just trying to put a hotel in here for a party. So this is primarily for the digital nomad, nomad, the worker. So there's, you know, four or five main issues that I see when people are proposing hotels. Noise, flash partying, slash other things that was happening at the Motorama Hotel. Size, the activity of traffic, and then parking. So let me start with parking. We have 28, 28 rooms. I believe we have 30 free parking spaces, Ken?
We have 32 parking spaces.
Okay, 32 parking spaces. So we anticipate to our partners at Great Stays, who's running a company that's running a lot of these rentals downtown in Detroit, anticipate a 70% stay rate or occupancy rate, which means if somebody does rent a car, which is not that common when they're visiting, 70% of the rooms will be occupied at one time, meaning there'll be around nine to 10 parking spaces open at all times for anybody that might have a guest or two that will be, that will be on-site. So it'll be plenty of parking. The second concern is the partying. I know there's been a huge, um, negative connotation to Airbnb's, short-term rentals, hotels because of, of partying. But we have six measures that we have put in place to actually prevent that. I could read those to you now, if you'd like to hear that. Screening and then background checks. Our insurance company actually does background checks in every person staying. Not super intense, but enough to flag anything that might come in. We also have online screening on the platform. We do not allow one-night stays in the weekend. We only allow two-night stays or more. That prevents the one-night partying issues that you guys will see in other Airbnbs in your communities. We have a minimum user rating requirement. When you're on Airbnb, VRBO, Sonder, any of these types of sites, you have a rating, just like you have an Uber and Lyft. And we don't allow anybody to stay in the, in the property with, with below a 4.5 user rating. New accounts, new and local accounts are not accepted. So if somebody gets a new account a couple of weeks before and their zip code is, say, in Southfield or in Royal Oak, they're immediately not allowed to rent. In regards to actually, if something actually does happen in terms of partying, we have a system in place called noise aware, where it actually monitors the noise in the building and actually the individual unit. It's not recording, but if there is a certain level, I think it's 12 or 14 decibels for longer than seven minutes, the guest will be notified through our platform to quiet down. If after seven, if, if they do not, after 30 minutes, the police are actually dispatched immediately. And then just on the operator and the owner of the project, our intent is for the worker visiting Ferndale to use the amenities in a safe manner. We also need reviews on our, on our building. We cannot allow to have disruption for the other guests because somebody's partying. So we have full intent to monitor that activity. And those are the seven ways that we prevent partying. Activity, this is a commercial use, the, it's a commercial zoning. So anything else that's going to go here is going to create just as much traffic, if not more. You guys will see the bike rental on the first floor. We're going to be promoting non-vehicle usage, bike, Lyft, Uber, bus. You know, as, as a developer, we focus on transit-oriented developments. We have one in Oak Park, just literally two blocks on Nine Mile down the street that was just approved. Working on one in Berkeley, we just started one in Detroit. So we like to focus on staying away from the car and use, you know, the amenities, like your legs and Lyft, Uber, bus, and rent a bike rental. Just let me go through my notes here for, oh, community, community benefit. We just put out, or we just, um, found, found a study about short-term rentals and hotels. For every $100 people are spending in the hotel in terms of gas rental, actually $222 gets put back in the community that, that the, that the unit is in. We'd also like to say, we do support short-term rentals, but we feel like we'd be pulling a lot of some of the rentals that people don't want to see in their neighborhoods to come here, um, to avoid, you know, the traffic that creates, is created by the neighborhood rentals over there. You know, we have, we're going to be offering affordable options for friends and families of, of local residents and local businesses. We are redeveloping a blighted structure that is very contaminated. It was a dry cleaner for many years and there are some issues with that. And then another element I wanted to add, I, I did start community engagement last Friday. I walked down Troy Street, knocked on many doors and dropped cards, walked down Pinecrest, dropped cards. With very sloppy handwriting, so I apologize. We met with, you know, the surrounding businesses, I spoke into Pastor Jim, Rabbi sitting behind us, and, um, you know, Mr. Abro, who owns a lot of the commercial assets around there. And I actually meet with Pastor Jim on, on Thursday. So I understand the concerns and, you know, I'm here to at least discuss these concerns with you to at least mitigate, you know, a lot of the, you know, concerns. Cause partying is something that, you know, the partying hotel I took away from you guys, it's not my intention to put it back in.
Did you say the partying hotel you took away?
Yeah, the Motorama Hotel, or whatever else was going on in there, I don't need to digress. So, um, as I said, you know, we're, as a company, we've been around for 40 years. My dad started the firm and we focus, we specialize on urban infill, on residential and, and hospitality.
Thanks, Mike.
And I, I believe that's the old plan that we sent Justin. It's not really called a boutique hotel, it's just, I mean, we probably need to figure out a better way for it. It's just a business hotel. And we'll figure out a better term for it, but at least you guys understand the whole concept behind it. And I'm here for any questions, and so is Kevin. He was also the architect for the Motor, Motorama Hotel. So the Motorama Hotel, the team is here to add another asset to Ferndale. team is here to add another asset to Ferndale.
Thanks, Mike. You've already addressed some of the questions that we got in emails. We did get two emails before I get into those. So there were some that were operational questions, so thank you. You talked through some of those. There were some other questions sort of about the site and dimensional questions too, so we'll get to those. But I want to first see if there is anyone here in the audience who has any questions or comments on the discussion item. Again, no action tonight of a potential rezoning at 1111 West Nine Mile. You're welcome to come on up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please, and address your comments to the planning commission. We'll take all of the comments. So if anyone wants to comment, come on up. We'll take all the questions and comments, and then we'll work to get answers and deliberate here at the table as well. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Lynn Clark-Guynor. I live at 510 Pinecrest. I'm currently on the steering committee for the master plan, so.
Oh, nice to meet you.
I see some familiar faces, sort of, with masks. But I travel for work, or I did before COVID. And my questions revolve around that. What amenities would be involved in the hotel? Because we don't want to put something in on the corner that isn't utilized because you can't get breakfast, you can't get lunch. There aren't amenities like you can get at the Hyatt Place in Royal Oak. Where will they advertise the hotel so that it stays full and becomes something that's an asset to the community? Also, three stories, how is that going to meld with the current community? One of my big issues with Ferndale is it's turning into kind of what the neighborhoods in Birmingham sometimes look like, where you've got a modern house next to a Victorian house. Would three stories just completely kill the character of that part of Ferndale? And also, I was a little alarmed when you stated that you're going to do background checks on your guests. Is that legal? I'm alarmed because I travel for work, and if the hotels I'm staying at are doing background checks on me, I wouldn't stay there. So those are just a couple of thoughts that I had.
Thank you. Got it. Thank you. We'll take other questions and comments from the audience, and then we'll work through all of them. Welcome, Rabbi. Nice to see you.
Hi. My name is Rabbi Herschel Fineman. I'm with Jewish Ferndale, 1725 Pinecrest. I have a property which is adjacent to the property in discussion. My wife wanted to come, but prior previous engagement precluded that, so I'm going to state her concerns first. Her number one concern was something which was just mentioned, is that with the presence of a three-story building, she calls it taking away the big sky, is that what's going to do to the panorama of Ferndale? Another point that she brought up was something which she was very happy, she would have been happy to hear Eli talk about, is the aesthetics of the community. How is this project going to benefit the people that live on Pinecrest, on Troy, and within the 500, within the immediate area? If it would be something, say, like even an insurance agent that was, that moved into their present location, so the person next to me could go buy insurance there. Whereas what benefit is this structure going to have to the community? She, I have this one more point, and I think it'll come to me, but should forget at this point. So my concerns, I spoke with Mike, last week we met, and he went over the points that he mentioned just here. And my concerns are with the actual building of the structure, because, and I brought this up to him, that the soil there is sand. And it's really difficult, as we know from what happened with the building of the DOT, the extra expenses that went into building the DOT to make sure that that structure was sound, so it wouldn't topple over, so it wouldn't sink. So if he, if the company is willing to go to those extra expenses, whether that's going to involve 350-foot piling till they hit bedrock, or pounding the, compressing the sand to make it such that it will be able to support concrete, our concern is what is all that construction going to do to our property? And we would like to see some kind of guarantees that if anything does happen, if you've got things, big machines pounding the dirt, then what's it going to do to the integrity of our building, our parking lot? These are the concerns that we raise. As far as I'm concerned, I really don't mind the idea of a hotel. Oh, the other point my wife wanted to mention is that there are numerous short-term staying places to stay in Ferndale. Ferndale, I think, at this point leads Oakland County in Airbnbs. So if a person wants to come to Ferndale, there's already a place for them to stay. Why do we need this structure to do that? They can stay at an Airbnb. So, but we, me personally, I like, I'm not opposed to the idea of it, because I would like to see possibly the people that are staying there, maybe could take part in some of our programs. We could benefit he and I. We could benefit each other. We could help them. They could help us. That I don't mind. But we're just worried about the structure. And then with the building on stilts, so when I put my property, when I took over the property from the dentist, the cleaners insisted that we close up the driveway that existed from Nine Mile into our parking lot, so as to prevent, for safety and for privacy. So we put up a fence, and I would like to see something like that also, so that if he's got stilts, 30 different stilt parking lot, that we have our privacy into our lot as well, that we have some kind of like a stockade fence, or some kind of a decorative wall, not something that's going to be just a monolithic ugliness, is our concern. Thank you.
Thanks, Rabbi. Let's take other questions and comments on us. Welcome, Eric.
Hello, Eric Guynor, 510 Pinecrest. Thank you guys for having us. So there's a couple concerns that I have about this. One of those is like what the Rabbi just talked about, setbacks in between commercial property and residential. I know there's a difference in between, you know, that brand of setbacks compared to residential, compared to residential and residential. The egress, is there going to be one, two, six? Are they going to come on to Nine Mile, Pinecrest? I don't even know how to ask this, but so.
Ask it to us. Ask it to us, Eric.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm really curious. What is the drive to have a hotel in Ferndale? Now, while I'm not opposed to the project, I'm really not. I'm opposed to the project's location, because this is in the community. It's not near downtown. It's not near a lot of hustle and bustle where people would want to come to Ferndale and enjoy Ferndale for what Ferndale is slowly not becoming. Another concern that I have is if the spot zoning change is approved, would there be language that if this project were not started within a given time, that the zoning change would revert back to what it was?
Oh, that's a great question. Yeah, we can talk about that.
Another thing, what are the contaminants in that, on that area? I have never been in the dry cleaning business. I have no idea what dry cleaners use. I do know it is pretty nasty. It is pretty toxic. But I don't know exactly those chemical compounds, or how they would even be able to get into the environment from, like, the washing machines, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Three stories, in my opinion, in a neighborhood, that's ridiculous. That's just my opinion, though. If it were laid out even the best way possible, and we have proof of that in the DOT, not going to be good for the rest of the community. There's going to be a lot of unhappy people because you have noise pollution, you have light pollution, and all these things need to be taken into consideration for the residents. Not for the sake of somebody that wants to make a buck, but for the residents, the people who live in this town, pay taxes. So those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
All right, thank you.
Hi, everybody.
Welcome.
Laura McColsky, 1015 West Hazelhurst, Ferndale State Councilperson.
I have that graphic as your council member.
Right? I'm a chameleon. It's the Ferndale Rat Patrol logo. That helps me stand out a little bit. So.
This helps if I had this. Welcome.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things that came in from residents that were not able to make it up here tonight. First and foremost, why this spot? Why not the area behind Comos along Nine Mile? Why not the area on Woodward by the old Tim Horton subway area? They have concerns about light intrusion and sound, given what we have seen with the DOT project and some of the ramifications to West Saratoga Street. There are concerns that with first-floor parking, we may end up having echoes of sounds as those cars are going through that parking structure out into the neighborhood. Likewise, with three stories, how can we guarantee that we won't have light intrusion into the neighborhood? First-floor retail and restaurant, how will that space be used? How can we maximize our ability to engage the community in that area? And then a personal question from myself, I love the idea of being able to kind of guarantee that noise levels won't become an issue, and that we won't have single-stay individuals there, and it won't become a party hotel. So my question is, is this a franchise? Is this some sort of app? How are these people being managed? And how do we know that it will stay that way moving forward? And that's all I had for you. Thank you so much.
Got it. Thanks, Councilmember. Had my glasses on, I would have known that the Councilmember would have seen it. Hello, welcome.
Hi. My name is Sally Hoy. I live at 1250 West Troy Street. So my backyard is pretty much kitty corner from that lot. I'm right behind the apartment building that's adjacent to that location. So a couple of concerns is, you know, just, you know, when I first heard about this proposed hotel there, I'm thinking, that lot is really small. How is that going to fit there? And I guess part of my question is, is this, like, building going to be going right up to the edge of the sidewalk, I'm guessing, to utilize most, the majority of the space minus that alley, I think, on the side? So I just, I have concerns about that. And also, as others have mentioned, just the fact that it's three stories, I feel that does not fit in with the residential, you know, houses that are nearby. And even the apartment building next door is no more than two stories. So I just feel like it's just out of place. So that's a concern that I have. And I also had concerns about how are we going to, you know, really propose or dictate that this is going to be business people that come and stay at this hotel? You know, my mind first just went to partiers. And just because we do have such an active downtown area, a lot of restaurants, and, you know, and even though you do have, there are ideas to keep, you know, the partiers out, I just don't know if that's feasible. And really, is that, I guess, is that really going to deter people from doing that? I mean, yes, you can have every best intention, but is that actually going to occur? And, you know, and I think someone else mentioned it, you know, I've lived in Ferndale for 20 years, and I just, what I love about Ferndale is our community, that sense of community. And I don't, I don't see how this enhances our sense of community. You know, and I don't know much about the difference between a mixed two zoning and how that differs from commercial, but, you know, something like, I heard the other proposal where, you know, it's a mixture of, you know, someone lives there, and then their business is there. That, to me, sounds more community-oriented than a hotel, at least in this location. So I think those are my main concerns, and, you know, definitely would love input and answers to those. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Sally.
Welcome.
Hi. My name is Patricia Sissel. I'm at 1079 Wuthington, Ferndale. I've lived in Ferndale all my life, 64 years. I've lived within two blocks of that location for 50 years, one 25 years on each side of it. Very familiar with that corner, very familiar with the history of the corner. I also have started a number of years ago, a Facebook page called Memories of Ferndale, Michigan. We have comments from people all around the world who have lived in the city of Ferndale from before its inception, since its inception, currently, who are newer. They refer themselves as Ferndalians versus Ferndalers, like we used to do. So I know the city. That's not the location for this type of thing. I believe, you know, all my life, it's been dry cleaners. And, you know, I know that there's definitely some chemicals that are there that would need to be taken care of properly. We, you know, talk about Rycol quite often on my page. But the thing is, that, you know, that's not really a residential area, or a commercial area, excuse me. The usage as a dry cleaners was a few cars in, a few cars out, very little employee need for parking and so on. They mentioned the parking numbers based on the requirements, but I don't recall hearing anything about parking requirements for the employees, managers, cleaners, anything that would be in addition needed for parking spaces. Also, through the years, Ferndale's been road diving, and I've seen some progress with that. We no longer have to be at the Dairy Queen with stepping out into the first lane of traffic, or walking down to what was our junior high, which is the grocery store, and, you know, being afraid of a car jumping the curb and pitting against a building. But, you know, there's so many things about this particular proposal. And I don't recall if they mentioned, was it, and pardon my vision, but I was at the eye doctors today, so I really can't read and see far with things. Is this a mixed-use development? I never saw the plan.
They do have proposed, and we'll ask them about it because it came up as well, some first-floor either retail or restaurant use.
Okay. Well, then, that would further add potential for more visitors, more parking, more customers. So that would further add to the definite impact in a negative fashion on that corner in terms of the neighborhood, the residents, and so on. In addition, you know, to the three stories, lack of parking for employees, then adding in the mixed-use type of thing rather than just a business hotel or a worker hotel, then that takes into account also more traffic for delivery of food, especially in the COVID era, and for, you know, people who are workers, you know, wanting food that's not necessarily on the premises, as someone had mentioned earlier. There's just so many things about this that it's just a plain no. And, you know, it's just, it's just a no-go. And, you know, like I said, I've lived here my whole life, and this is not the location. Like other people have mentioned earlier, some other things that I also, you know, agree with their concerns. But I think there's other locations in Ferndale where this could be achieved, like someone mentioned, more on the Woodward corridor, you know, where it's sort of more the typical neighborhood-type fitting. And this is not it. Thank you.
Thanks, Patricia. Thanks, Patricia.
Hello, welcome. Hi, thank you. Peggy Hark, 566 West Saratoga. Yeah, I'm not really opposed to a small boutique hotel in Ferndale. I think that there is a need for that. I think people want to be here in Ferndale. But I can't think of like these two projects that we heard tonight, the contrast with, you know, the first one having this like intimate, beautiful place for residents to enjoy and people who don't live here to enjoy. And then this, which seems like there's no benefit to residents at all and that it's kind of just a cash cow. I have been affected by the DOT and the apartments across the street from Western. And now this will kind of complete the triangle of tall buildings with light pollution, added noise, and I don't think I've had a summer in the last five years that I don't hear construction all the time when I'm in my backyard. So if this was a project that was, I mean, even as a resident now, you know, kind of the safeguards for keeping this a, you know, legit place to stay, as a resident, I couldn't even go there with my husband because I live in this zip code. So it's, it's like there's nothing really for the people who live here. And so really, that's, that's my big thing, is the hype, the noise, and that there's really, it's just really about somebody coming into our community to make money and nothing really for our residents. So, thank you for listening.
Thanks, Peggy. Any other questions or comments from the audience? Welcome.
Hi, my name is Paul Torres. I live at 1336 West Troy, which is kind of over and down and behind. So it's a good thing you guys all said something already because I had a whole page, but you guys covered most of it. So I'm just going to cover a couple of things here. I agree so far with everyone who said essentially it's too big and in the wrong space, in the wrong part of town. I've lived on West Troy for 21 years and that intersection is already, even with the, even with the dry cleaner gone and the Payless gone, it's still kind of busy with the Taco Bell and the 7-Eleven. But if something were to go in that corner of this size with a potential business, if you will, and then something goes in across the street at the Payless building, then it's just chaos, right? So I like the idea of a digital nomad or whatever hotel. I just think it's the wrong, the wrong location and the wrong size. So either change the size or change the location. So I'm even thinking that, I think the rabbi said earlier about maybe a small office building or like an insurance agency where you're going to have a couple of small businesses in there, not a lot of traffic, that would be great. So, and that is actually, that's the only thing I had because I think everybody else said pretty much it was on my list. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else coming up at this time? All right, I think we've kind of got two sets or two types of questions. We've got some operational questions and then we've got some site-related questions. The operational questions were at the heart of one of the emails that we got from Ms. Dixon on, did she give an address? I did not give the address. And you've covered a lot of those, Mike. The, some of the dimensional questions and location questions, we had an email from Ms. Albert on West Troy. So I'll make sure we get to those as well. But a lot of them are similar to what we talked about today, but she really also focused on pedestrian traffic at that corner, so I'll make sure to talk about that. All right, let's start with some of the operational questions.
Sure.
A few, a few questions, you talked about occupancy and the types of travelers that you're focusing on. What is it about this site that makes it, well, I just said operational and then I said site, didn't I? I'm taking it back.
Okay.
Sorry, let us, because they kind of overlap. Let's talk about background checks. So a question about the background checks and sort of excluding local zip codes in the operations plan, how do those things work?
So the background checks, they're really just checking for, you know, police activity. They're not looking at medical records or anything like that or where you work or anything. They just want to make sure you're not a bad actor. So they're very shallow, they're not in-depth. And two, which I'm sorry if I wasn't clear on this, it was, it was new accounts and local accounts on any short-term rental platform. So that prevents somebody from creating an account, coming in with a five-star rating and partying. That is, this is not preventing any local people from enjoying the hotel at all.
But if I didn't have an account, so actually, well then, will you talk about how is this, how does the site work? Are you part of like Airbnb or how does, how do the mechanics of this work?
So our partner is called Great Stays.
Great Stays.
He has several units that he does this with. He has several platforms he uses to mitigate and eliminate partying. So those measures are already in place and are actually working and have been in operations for quite some time. What was, I'm sorry, what was the first question?
We're talking about sort of what the management process is and when it comes to excluding local zip codes, you know, sort of who's running it, how does the booking platform work?
Right, it's, it's all digital. So it's ran through a few different places, Airbnb, VRBO, we are working on our own website now. And then that will run all of the rating screenings and the other various activities we have for partying. But I will say, there's not been a person that deserves to be in a unit that's not partying that's been, that's been turned out. So the main point is, is it's preventing new people that just want to party to prevent it from coming in. Everything is automated. So we have one of these in our buildings downtown Detroit. They have, we have 45 units there. You text a code, you go to the front door, there's security there, and you text your code into the front door, it unlocks, then you go to your unit and there's an individual door with a keypad that you unlock. Every unit will have cleaning done afterwards. There'll be a security guard and a manager coming by the property all the time, making sure everything is okay. I forgot to add a couple of things in my presentation. We do have a retail space for a community coffee shop built for the residents and for the actual community. No food, just coffee, maybe some pastries. The entrance into the hotel is actually in the alley. Though Heinecker's will not see any cars, you know, coming into the hotel or neither will Nine Mile, it's just coming into the alley. We'll be repaving the alley for the project.
Where will staff park? And will they be on-site 24/7 or come and go? Does that work?
That's a good question. I was not anticipating staff because there is technically no staff. There's this cleaning staff when they come in. So they'll be parking in the parking lot and then security guard. So we'll probably use three or four spaces probably at all times for the building operations and the baristas in the coffee shop. So that's something we'll have to, we'll have to look at more intently.
Okay. Now let's talk about the site a little bit. So a number of questions about the location and what it is that's appealing about this location versus somewhere closer to the Nine Woodward intersection.
So we recognize that Nine Mile is a gateway into downtown. There are not a lot of available properties in Ferndale, as I'm sure many of you know. This property is too expensive to develop an apartment building on, in my opinion. And office space, we all know what office space is like these days with COVID, and I don't think it fits for retail in terms of triple net or, sorry, in terms of restaurant, just the odd shape of the property. And that's, and that's the real reason why. There's just no availability downtown. Nine Mile is an extremely walkable street, it's a 10-minute walk to downtown, and that's, that's really the reason why.
And the market that you see driving this is, is mostly out-of-towners coming, coming to Ferndale, not so much like.
Right, it's mostly out-of-towners, but it's, it's other people coming from the east side, west side, just want to see an interesting place. So these aren't going to be designed like typical hotels or typical apartments. They'll be intriguing designs meant to attract people that want to stay in, I don't want to say the word funky, but just in.
You can say that.
Unique places.
We are funky Ferndale.
Yes, I know. I didn't want to say funky Ferndale, but.
You can totally.
In, in unique places. And I understand, we've read aloud and clear in the light control or light pollution. The three-story thing, I am understanding is very important, so we are going to look at that. Setback issue, so like when we were designing this, preliminary designing it with, working with Justin and Kevin, setbacks work so well for this product type, it makes it use zoning. So an apartment building can have a setback. But our use is commercial district or commercial use too, and the setbacks are a little different. So we still have to, you know, play around with that to see what could work. The good thing about this project is that we do have flexibility in moving things around and, you know, not maximizing the space. There's actually, we backed up the building off of Nine Mile about four or five feet already, creating a vegetation berm, as you would speak, and some, maybe some common So there, there are things we can do to massage this a lot.
When it comes to noise and light issues, will you talk a little bit more about that? You know, the, you've got a nighttime use, so now you've got glowing lights up two stories high that weren't there before.
Right.
What are some of the ways that?
100% very, two very valid points. I could confidently say that there probably no, will be no lights on the west side of the building and then south side of the building. On the east side of the building facing KFC or Taco Bell, we will probably have some lights. And then on the north side of the building, we would, we would have some lights. You know, not bright lights for security, but lights to add character to the building. Definitely nothing like the DOT. I read all those reports as well. In terms of the parking deck or the parking lot, there will be an entrance off of the alley facing the apartment building. But, you know, we don't foresee, you know, many open areas on the south side, so the south residents will get any noise from the parking. There'll be a block wall there. On the east side, that's all going to be built-out construction for the commercial space and the lobby. On the north side, I don't think you're going to hear anything anyway because of traffic on Nine Mile, not to mention we'll have a vegetation, trees, shrubs to kind of beautify, if that's a word, sorry, that portion of the property. So we definitely hear aloud and clear on, on the parking noise and the light. So we will take that into account for sure.
I'm sure we're going to have questions here at the table about some of the dimensional setback and separation of uses issues, so I've just circled a few of those.
Right.
As well as sort of interaction at the intersection. Before we come up to the, two more, two more things before we come up to the table, there was a question, you might or might not know this yet, or you might or might not be able to disclose that you're not the site owner, obviously. Do you have any information about what the pollution is at the site?
We do not. I'm working with the seller on, he did a do-care.
Okay.
So I'm working with the entity that developed the do-care.
So if you were to come with a site plan, you'd have more information.
Oh, yeah.
At that time.
Yeah, we'd probably have a mitigation, at least a preliminary plan until we started really digging borings and seeing what kind of soils there are.
Okay.
And we had a conversation about the sand being there and that the building's on a million-year-old beach. So our number one thing we do is test the compaction because, I mean, this might not be able to support a three-story building.
Our high school is sinking, so, yeah. Our high school is sinking, so let that be a note in your book. The, the question though, from your neighbor, that was the last one I wanted to get to, about construction process, is that something you've got a sense of yet or you are still needing more information about compaction and pilings and?
We're, it's going to be all wood. You know, brick facade with some hardy board accents and Kevin can speak more on that, but it's going, it's going to be a wood structure. So, you know, no steel or limited steel. It'd be all internal if there was steel, just a few support.
Yeah, obviously, these aren't supporting cars like the DOT.
No, it's not.
Okay.
And just, you know, a wooden structure, you know, brick. It's not supposed to be some super modern element from, you know, 2050. It's just supposed to potentially fit the neighborhood as best as it can. And we have not sat through, we've not really gotten to the nitty-gritty on the, on the exterior design.
Okay. You know, if this does come back, you know, as a part of a rezoning with a site plan and more pieces, that the question that came up about community benefit is going to be an important one. That's always going to be a huge conversation in any rezonings. I'm not trying to put you on the spot and I know that there are a lot of different ways this can be sliced and diced and moved around, and so I want you to kind of be thoughtful and open to community benefit because you're going to get questions about that.
Okay.
If there's a rezoning application.
Appreciate that.
Yep. And speaking of conditional rezoning, a question for Justin, there was a question about conditional rezoning reversions, how that process works. I know that there are some time limits after permits are pulled and also in conditional rezonings about how, both what can happen on the site and then if nothing happens, it goes away.
Exactly. So reversion is the, is the word used in the ordinance, and so bonus points to Eric for, for reading that out. It is a two-year, two years from the approval. There needs to be substantial construction towards building permits. There's some extra language in there, but generally it's two years. And that's consistent with site plan approvals that are typical throughout this process.
And I mean, it's not super common for things to revert, but it has happened, you know, within my time on this.
Yeah.
Commission, that conditional rezonings have happened and then the project hasn't gone forward for any number of reasons. So things do revert and a conditional rezoning is often used to sort of protect the, to put more stress, pressure on the project and then kind of protect that, that site plan as opposed to allowing anything in that zoning district to happen on that site.
Right. So a conditional rezoning, people, applicants offer, voluntarily offer up things. Sometimes it's related to density, sometimes it's related to, you know, private open area or setbacks. So a number of things, sometimes parking, could include some operational types of things and hours. And yeah, I'm trying to think, I think the most recent rezoning that did revert back to the original was a self-stored facility on.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. All right, I'm going to take questions and comments from the commission. I've got a few that I've circled to make sure that we got to, but who wants to kick us off? Or shall I just call people again? Start with Commissioner Hark first? Anything else time?
Yeah, well, so first of all, I'm a little concerned with the ingress and egress being off of the public alley. Again, it's a public alley and you're kind of using it as your private driveway in a way with how much traffic is probably going to be coming in and out. I do appreciate that you're going to repave that for sure. But I do have a kind of a question about what property, you said you, you have other properties like this around Metro Troy. What's the property in downtown Detroit that you do this with?
It's 139 Cadillac Square.
Okay, okay.
It's actually a building, the operator there is Sonder.
Okay.
They operate 45 units there.
Okay, so do you usually, when you do a project like this, do you build it and then punt it off to an operator or do you plan on operating this? Like, like I know you're giving us kind of like what the game plan is for this type of property, but then do you then bring in another operator and say, okay, now you take over from here and just let them do it or?
That's a great question. So the one downtown, we just leased the building and they just did it. So they, they take care of all the operations. Here, we are partnering with an operator, Great Stays, so I'll be involved in the property management and the operations.
Okay. And then, and you said there's no full-time staff on the property, just kind of come and go as they're checking in or whatnot?
With security.
With, is the security full-time or is the security come and go as well?
So we just don't know. We don't know yet. So definitely during the evening times, there'll be security. Daytime, we'll see what the traffic's like. times, there'll be security. Daytime, we'll see what the traffic's like, and if need be, we need security, then there'll, it'll be there.
Okay, because I get, one of my concerns on that is, without having even a hotel manager on state, on state or whatnot, if there's ever an emergency, you're pretty much then punting off to the taxpayer, emergency services to come out and treat it. So, that's my only concern, is that if there's not someone readily on the property at all times, that's going to then fall onto the community to kind of pick up for it, so.
Well, there's actually two, two levels in front of that. So, the security guard will be there, and then Great Stays will have a twenty-four-hour manager, making sure that there's no issues in any of the properties in the area. Kind of like a twenty-four-hour maintenance guy that has a flooding toilet.
Okay, so, but the, the rotating around all properties in the area.
Right, so there's a, there's a major emergency, they'd be driving right there.
Okay. Okay. And then, I, just kind of a side note, um, is, you know, I'm not a huge fan of doing a dead frontage on Nine Mile. I appreciate you guys doing the setback with the berm. Um, again, with kind of the community connection and whatnot, by doing that dead sidewalk, you're, it's not really benefiting the community to walk past what is a parking garage. Um, and I know we've had other properties come along that have done that, and it hasn't been to the benefit of the community. So, um, if there was ever a consideration of a reduction in the size, and I know you said you're possibly considering going from the three, somehow shrinking it down.
Right.
Um, if that meant that you could get rid of a parking spot or two in the process, and expand the commercial property along Nine Mile, that would be more of a benefit for the community to have more of an interaction space than to have just a bush to walk by.
Yeah, I'm looking at the plan now, and, uh, we can definitely bring the commercial space over, for sure. Um, so we, we could definitely, I mean, the short answer is absolutely. So, um, we just haven't done, you know, much study on, on that yet. But yes, it's all, everything's really possible. We have a lot of opportunity with, uh, shape and size, shape and size, and, um, changing the commercial a little bit, so.
Okay.
We, yeah, we'd be more willing to do that.
Okay. I'm good, it's time, thank you.
Commissioner Hefner first, Commissioner Haskins?
Yeah, I echo the comments on the wall, Long Woodward. That was going to be something that I, I mentioned as well. And I, I want to make, make one point clear, that I, I think I heard, that this, the proposed building meets mixed-use two setback and height requirements, but for the proposed use. Is that accurate?
So, um, it, it, the parking, so mixed-use does require a fifteen-foot parking setback. So, all, the parking would need to be adjusted, whether that's, you know, two diagonal rows in the middle, something like that. Um, so that would need to be adjusted. There's also, um, a rear setback on the south side, um, depending on the building height, that would be required, um, as well. And I think, I think a twenty-foot, uh, rear setback on the lower level. So, there's some adjustments, you know, adjustments to be made, uh, for sure.
Yeah, I just, several of the comments from the audience were around, like, height and setback, and I, you know, I, what, whether it's this project or another project, there's, there's going to, there's going to be some height and some, a build-to line that, that we're going to have to all get comfortable with, right, whether it's this project or another. Um, so that was an only, a comment that I wanted to make clear, because I don't know whether the, everyone in the room was necessarily following that. Um, I'd also, you know, I understand, I, I appreciate the feedback around why the site, and I can totally understand, working in real estate, right, the limitations of, of, um, property availability and, and putting together enough parcels to be able to do a project like this. Um, but I'd be interested if there was any data, whether it be through the master plan, or an economic development, local economic development plan that speaks to the need for, um, housing, right? So, this is either going to be a rezoning or, or a PUD, and so, if, if, if there was some way to align this with broader local economic development strategies or initiatives, I think that that would give, um, certainly me comfort. Um, yeah, that, that's all for me.
Have you, do you want, uh, or, do you want Kevin to touch on setbacks?
Oh, it's up to Kate Houshaw's demand meeting.
Yeah, and I know, and Justin's talked a little bit about it too. Yeah, we are, you know, we're looking at two different zonings, and so there's obviously each zoning has a separate type of setback. And, um, you know, one thing that we looked at, obviously, on the, uh, the south side, next to the residential, um, you know, we, we've pushed the building to the maximum, or the, the minimum setback, which is five feet. Um, and as far as, um, along Nine Mile, that's been an issue too, because there, again, I think with, um, probably make me wrong, Justin, the mixed-use, or the C2 provides for an average of six hundred feet each way. Obviously, um, there's a couple, obviously, if we go west, there's some buildings that are, the apartment building setback a little bit, and then I think it's the church as well, is a little bit further closer. As you go east, some of the buildings are closer. So, you know, we could, we will obviously do an average to find out where we're at on that. I think we'll probably be looking for, uh, I know we're talking about, you know, we, with parking, where we're going to put it, because, I mean, this is, it's twenty-twenty-twenty. This is the layout of the parking lot, so, um, but I, we can pull that off, off, off of Nine Mile, push the building back a little bit, you know, we'd be, obviously, you know, do that. The, and, and that wall, it is, it's something that's, we, Mike and I have talked about, it's something we need to really make it a pedestrian level, something that is, you know, articulates that wall without just being something that there's, I guess, a building, an apartment building that does the same thing, it's just a blank wall on, uh, on Nine Mile, the apartment building there.
It's why we changed the downtown.
Exactly. And that's not what we want to do, and that's not what I would, even if you had the ordinance in place to do that. So, there's some things that we've talked about. I mean, is it something we create an art wall, and give it to the community as how to potentially local artists and, and do, you know, on segments of those wall, of that wall? Do we, you know, curb, do we do things with it, with materials? So, so it's not just a, a brick or block wall. It may be brick, but is it just brick that's just your common, you know, lane of it, or do we do some things that are pretty interesting? And as far as setting the back a little bit, it, we can do things with hardscape and, and things like that along that wall. So, along that, the stretch for, from our, our length there, so. Um, and as far as the corner, we've pulled it back a little bit, the, so that it's not right on the corner. We do have, you know, on Pine Crest, I think there's about twenty-two feet that we're away from the curb. So, we're, we're setback from the curb a bit. And the same with, uh, Nine Mile, I think it's about eighteen feet. So, that corner could be really a nice corner there for the building, um, and the amenity space above it.
Just see if we've got other commissioners' questions and comments right now. Commissioner Brayson?
I agree about Nine Mile, so I won't go into that again. Um, you mentioned going, talking about community amenities, uh, and, and you mentioned a, a coffee house or some type of, uh, you know, at the corner of Pine Crest. Are there other hotel amenities? Uh, what does that look like as a hotel guest, and are those amenities things that could also be shared by the community, or, or are they completely separate? Um, like, we have other projects with, like, rooftop, green space and that kind of stuff, and can you talk about that a little bit?
Initially, the corner, uh, obviously, the first floor of that corner, um, is, if, um, if you look at the, the north, the north corner there, is, would be the, the commercial space, whatever that is, but it's probably something that would work with the hotel. Um, and along, as you go south along, um, Pine Crest, that would be the lobby for the hotel. Probably a two, again, if we were at a three-story, we're talking right now as a three-story, it would be a two-story lobby for the hotel. And then, above the commercial space, and, Justin, can we get to the, is there a way to get, oh, to this? Oh, oh, no, that's not it. Sorry. Oh, just go down, yeah. Just wanted to just, no, I'm going to go to the second.
Second page here?
Yeah, I'll get to it, sorry. So, um, I see what works now, so. I don't know if everyone can see this, but this is kind of a rough sketch of what we did. And again, this is an older concept, we've actually changed it a bit, but the idea would be, obviously, you see the first floor, um, footprint with the parking, and then the second and third floor are very much the same. Um, and so, we have a two-story lobby, and then we have two spots, um, to the north, that's above the coffee shop, or retail space, and those would be amenities for the, uh, the hotel guests. One being, we don't know yet, you know, but something on the second floor, maybe the third floor could be a three-season room, where we can have, um, opening glass, um, windows that, you know, are the Arcadian-type windows, and it could be an open space in the summer, or, you know, really fall. Um, and then another concept we have too, there's, we have a little business office or a conference room for the, uh, for the guests, if they needed to run a space. So.
Any follow-up?
Yeah, and I, I don't know if, if it's further discussion with the neighbors and, and, you know, we'll see further development. I know this is only a discussion item, so I guess I'll hold other questions.
Commissioner Schubelter?
Yeah, it's, um, having a hard time visualizing how this space will operate. I know it's, it's, I, I hear you guys, it just, it's, it's, uh, but it almost feels like, instead of a managed catered property, like a hotel, it's just going to be a, a stack of Airbnbs. And I don't know how that looks, and I don't know how that will affect the community in this area. So, I'm unsure about that. I, some, um, precedents would be useful, seeing how other places have handled it, what this looks like. I mean, I don't think there's, I don't know if you can even, if there's any examples of what this looks like five years later. Um, because it's, it seems like it's a relatively new business model. Um, but any, anything that could help put, like, my mind at ease about some of that, to make the, this won't just kind of turn into something that we don't really want in the community. And also, uh, just to reiterate, the, the community, uh, I think will, like, I think we, the community amenities are going to be important, because to see how, how, because this, I mean, it's, I, I don't like spot zoning. I'm very much against spot zoning. I don't like just, someone wants to put something here, so let's put this there. Um, the master plan was designed a certain way, and there, there, there needs to be something given back to the community, and it can't be taken for granted that, that, uh, the community is, is, uh, working with you. So, but yeah, just emphasis on community and, um, some kind of precedent studies to see how this looks like five years after inception.
Matt, Costman?
Uh, thank you, Chair Baker. Um, I have two issues. Um, and I agree with everything that my colleagues have, have shared. Um, one, I don't like the issue of having two-hundred feet, um, non-activated wall along Nine Mile, right at the corner of Pine Crest. Um, I would want to see that two-hundred feet activated with storefronts and shops, and I know that would force you to have to, uh, move your parking either underground or onto the second story, uh, which would make the building even taller, and I couldn't support that. And, and I'm sorry, but a painted wall, um, whether it's an art wall or whatever, is not the same as an activated facade. Um, the other issue I have is location. This is not the right location for a three-story building. Um, it's on the outskirts of the downtown, where it'll be in a sea of one-story buildings. I'm worried there would be an extreme impact on the neighborhood, shifting it from a low-density, high-activity area to a much denser intersection, which I don't think is what the community or the neighborhood desires. That's all I have.
Thanks, Costman. Um, I think we've, we've definitely talked about my sort of biggest eye-popper. Um, so there's a lot of things about, um, you know, buildings like Ferndale House that, that didn't work very well, and that caused us to make some significant changes to our, our downtown zoning. Um, and that big blank wall on Nine Mile, regardless of the good intent of the developer around art and green space and activation, it doesn't work. Um, what does work about Ferndale House is that it's right next to Shippensburg Park. So, you, you have an outdoor space for, it's, it's a public park, right, city-maintained. It's, it's, it's space for the residents, it's space for public programming, it's space visually for people who are walking and turning at the corner. It just, it's kind of this great corner pocket that, that really helps make a big building work to the extent that a big building can work, you know, but that, so I guess one of the things I wanted to talk about is that trade-off, again, between, between green space and setbacks and, um, and street front activation and parking. So, have you guys had any conversations about, I mean, I've certainly been to hotels in, in core downtown areas where I have to valet because they don't have onsite parking. You know, you've got a sea of parking lots around you, at churches and apartment buildings. Have there been any conversations about kind of how parking operations might work, um, if you had a long-term agreement with, whether it's Jim across the street, or it's some, you know, two doors down at the church? Um, but it sounds like this is kind of a self-service thing, and so that might not be part of the, the business model.
It is more self-service. Um, we have been trying to design this where we're not violating many or really any variances.
Yep.
Um, so that, and that is the real reason why that the parking is provided.
Yep.
And it's a huge amenity for, um, the guests.
Mm-hmm.
We have not had parking conversations with, uh, our neighbors, um, yet. I am meeting with Pastor next week. Um, so this is something that I can bring up to him.
Okay.
In, in regards to the three-story building, um, I just don't see how, I, hundred percent, we could probably figure out doing two or two and a half, or the third-story setback, or a small lot, small, like, we could figure that out. But the apartment guy's going to come in here and build a three-story building. It's, that's what it's zoned for. So, I think a three-story building's coming anyway. Um, but we will definitely make it, um, you know, work on this, to see what we can do to move this site around. In terms of community benefits, it's just the site is so small, and to build a pocket park on the project, I just don't know where I'd put it.
Under, understood. I was just, you know, thinking about a corner and some of the concerns that, that, I, I live a block away. Uh, I live right by the Dairy Queen, right? So, we walk all the time right around here with the dog, and, um, although Nine Mile has definitely improved, and I like that I don't stand in the streets because of Dairy Queen, like Patricia said, um, you know, that corner still is tight, and we've got lots of kids coming and going. You see all the kids in the bike lanes, going up to the skate park and coming and going, and schools thankfully don't be back in. Um, so even more kids up and down Pine Crest, and so having your, your, um, your egress off of the alley, I think makes sense to me, but then having the building lobby on Pine Crest, where people are getting dropped off on Pine Crest in the bike lane, like, how is that sort of working, where you've got, like, an Uber coming, and they're going to put in a Pine Crest address, and then they're going to drop some off and block the bike lane? But also, scrunching the building up without thinking about how the Nine Mile frontage is activated is one of the reasons it's not commercial zone. I mean, like, it's mixed-use zoning because we've got a few more regulations and mixed-use around street front activation. And I, we're also, we're going through, you know, you've got one of our, um, one of our members of our steering committee for our master plan update here tonight. Um, you know, we're going through master planning update, which of course will result, well, the zoning update, and, you know, so to say that three-story is going to happen here, well, under current zoning, it, it could. Under a C2, which Taco Bell's also C2, it's not, you know, it's not totally dissimilar stretch, um, it, it could, but there's, you know, no one has a crystal ball in the future about kind of what dimensions might be, or, um, uh, you know, how zones might change. So, I, I'm, I, I, I can't have a blank wall on Nine Mile. I ca, I can't have a blank wall on Nine Mile. Um, and then, the enforcement, Justin brought this up, um, you talked Mike about having a system that sort of immediately kicks calls to the Ferndale PD, you know, so we're, we're having now, you know, potentially, you, I'm sure saw the list, the giant list of runs from Aitken Woodward, right? So, like, now are we constantly dispatching for noise complaints, because there's no management on site. So, if we were going to talk about community benefit, and in terms of a rezoning, I'd want, I definitely want to talk about management. Um, because we, like many cities, have a police shortage right now. Um, and so to have a property that is overly reliant on the police, like Aitken Woodward was before you fixed it up, you know, it, it, it really puts a stress on the system, which I know you're aware of. So, thinking about that operational model in a small city, um, gives me some concern.
I'll find some metrics on how often that tool is used.
That'd be really helpful.
Um, I'll find some metrics around that.
That'd be really helpful. We're not a big metropolitan police department, you know, we're, we're a small town, so. Any final questions or comments?
Uh, sorry, yes, I do. Um, have you already purchased the property?
I've not.
Okay.
Uh, Justin, was there anything in particular you were looking for that we didn't, in terms of feedback or direction? We've talked about lot lines uses, community benefit, and we've touched on everything that was in the emails that came in.
Yeah, no, I think, I think that was all helpful. I mean, C2 or mixed-use two, there are really no parking allowed in the front yard.
Right.
Whether it's a setback.
Whether it's a setback that's dictated by the properties nearby or, um, you know, some other option, um, really, you know, I think that, that the blank wall and having some activation, um, could, could be achieved. I think, you know, there are the trade-offs right of, um, right now this project would meet like the parking requirements. Um, Nine Mile's well-serviced with, you know, one of the busiest bus routes in the county and does have bike lanes and sidewalks and walkable to downtown. So, you know, parking reduction is something that, you know, I think could meet some of the criteria in the ordinance, but again, it's, you know, an applicant to make that case, but I think could make sense depending on what that number is if, if other things are moved around onsite. So I, I think this was helpful. I mean, that, um, I think, you know, they're lucky that the alley is there. I think that is sort of a benefit, um, you know, that it, so that way there's not another new driveway on Nine Mile, I guess, but.
Yeah.
So I, so I think that can help, but I don't know. It was helpful to me. I don't know if these guys have any other questions, but.
I'll ask. I, um, yep, sorry, one second. I'd also look to you and, um, and Jordan, you know, we, we heard from the applicant that, you know, there's a, there's a challenge in terms of available properties and what can be acquired. Um, and so I would look to you and Jordan, if you haven't already, you know, sort of to, to work with Mike and see if there's anything that you know of that's not advertised or like in terms of location, if there's, if there's something else that's available that, you know, maybe is coming on the market or isn't aware.
Yeah, it's, it's tough, but we're always, we're always listening for sure. I think, and the other thing too, you, you hit on it, you know, being that the master plan's coming up, I mean, the site does kind of, at least with the current zoning dictate sort of an L-shaped type of building.
Yeah.
Which has its positives and negatives, um, just with the, the room for parking there, to be honest. So I think there's something we should all keep in mind as we keep going with the master plan, or start the master plan, I should say, so.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Haidt?
Yeah, you know, I just kind of thinking along the lines of this being kind of a almost stacked Airbnb kind of thing. One of the questions I have is, so we have this Airbnb ordinance to restrict the amount of Airbnbs within proximity to one another. Does this set up precedence if, in essence, it is just a bunch of Airbnbs because there's no management, there's, there's nothing about this as a hotel, really. It's just Airbnb units you reserve, whatnot. Does this set the precedence to say that we can't go back with Motorama down, down the road if, you know, occupancy goes down and you ask for a zoning change, then make that an Airbnb kind of resident structure like that? And how does that impact our ordinance with Airbnbs within proximity when we're telling people who own homes that you can't have two Airbnbs next to each other, but then someone can say, oh, I'm gonna change the zoning and I'm just gonna build them all on top of each other? Does that create a huge legal nightmare for our city in that case?
So, um, we'll, we'll get with the, the makers of the short-term rental ordinance. That wasn't really me, but, um, it, you know, at least initially, the, the talk was less about short-term rentals and more of a hotel. And so we'll, we'll talk more about the operations and go from there. All valid points. And so, no, no matter what, that was an ordinance that we were gonna discuss.
Kevin and Mike, is there anything you were looking for in terms of specific feedback that you didn't get? You may have gotten some you didn't want, but is there anything that you were looking for tonight that you didn't get? Any last questions for us in terms of direction or feedback from the commission?
You know, I just, I would, I would like to understand if, um, A, if the city, you know, we don't like putting projects in cities that they don't want, right? So if no one wants this, I'm not gonna put it. Um, so really, I'd like to get a, just a general, you know, consensus if, you know, if this is interesting to you guys, if you guys are interested in actually allowing me to go down the path of applying and working some things with Kevin and Justin. And, but if it's like, if you're gonna say no at the site plan review and the, everything like that, then I'd like to know.
Yeah, and we, we didn't ever want to have someone, you know, like, get led down the path.
Right.
Right. Um, I mean, we can do, if there's anyone who wants to give input, obviously there's a lot of potential changes that could happen, right? So.
I don't mind sharing my opinion. Uh, that's what I get elected for.
You were gonna say paid, then you remembered you don't.
Yeah, it's not because I get paid for it. Um, I am not very fond of this business model. I don't like the location of this. However, um, if you considered a different location more in the city core, I could support that. Um, there's a great empty lot right here at Bermuda and Nine Mile that's been sitting empty for a long time, right next to a public parking lot. A perfect place for a boutique hotel.
Anyone else?
I'll be the devil's advocate. Um, so the, the question for, based on what I read in the staff report that was provided to us, the question that was posed was really based on use and, right? And to me, the use isn't a concern. I think it's about building, building something that, that is contextually appropriate and otherwise meets the zoning code. So, sorry.
No, you had slightly different feedback. We are, we are separate people.
And I, I should follow up on that. You know, I, um, I have, through my day job, participated in projects where they've had this contactless hotel model. And we, I, I certainly haven't been involved in these types of projects long enough to have, um, some of the, the retrospective on how it's gone in five years out and how does this impact short-term rentals and things like that. And I think that information would be very interesting and helpful, um, as we continue to explore this.
This type of model that just came out in like 2018, 19, so the five-year runway, I, I'm not gonna have. But the success of other operators, I can, there's just been plenty of, for some success there, that I can, I can share with you.
Through, through the chair?
Oh, I'm sorry, Greg, then done.
Can you list off some of the cities that these other models are in? I mean, you mentioned Detroit, so I'm assuming downtown Detroit.
It's, it's, it's mostly cities. So all over the country.
It's not a suburb, small, little community like Ferndale.
If I could, I mean, I think that we should probably give it time. I'm aware of projects in much smaller, like rural communities where we've done this, yeah. Um, and so I think maybe giving him the opportunity to collect some information and bring it back, um, you know, if he does choose to, to proceed with a, because I, I do, I know that there's other models out there, yeah.
Mr. Bryson?
To the chair, I was just gonna mention, we've seen a lot of projects here that had a lot of potential, but didn't have a lot of neighborhood support. And so regardless of which way you decide to go, having that neighborhood support and understanding and developing something with the neighborhood in mind has been so critical in projects we've seen all the time we've been here, so.
Yeah, we've been a long time. Um.
I agree with, that's why I started with the walking down the street, dropping guards and trying to.
I appreciate that you did that before you came here, yeah.
Get everybody as much as possible. I probably should have picked a better time. It was like 3 o'clock on a Friday, but, uh, I met quite a few people.
People work at home now, right? So you probably got a lot of people. I think the, the challenge for me is, I mean, would be, like I've already said, the long dead wall on Nine Mile. And if there is an activation plan that brings some, some value to that Nine Mile frontage and impacts your parking, then I really need to see a solid, like, off-site parking or shared parking plan, which is gonna impact your operational model, right? So it kind of starts to snowball. So I think you can kind of take that for, for what it's worth. If there's an out-of-the-box model, you know, kind of a turnkey thing, it might not exactly work here the way that it does in a different spot. And that, that might not make that financial sense. I, I realize that. Um, but it's a, it's a small, tight site. Um, I think you can do a lot with it. It's a super walkable neighborhood, um, which is a, which is a great thing for, for ground-floor retail when it's done right. Um, we have these little retail spaces down by me, you know, closer to Livernoy that are, some of them are constantly turning over and some of them are sitting empty. And it's, that has to do with building owners. Like, there's a lot of reasons these spaces aren't, aren't activated on Nine Mile, but it's not because there's no one walking by. Like, there's, there's a lot of people. Um, and, you know, for the right, for the right operator with the right timing, um, that's not a drive-through because everyone wants to put a drive-through here and that's not gonna happen. Um, this will be, this will be a great, a great site. I don't, I don't know if this can, I don't know if the model fits the site business-wise. That is a, is a mic call.
Okay.
Anything else you for close? Thank you.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate everybody's time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, you've got a number of neighbors here tonight, obviously. I don't know if you've got more business cards, Mike, but, um, you've got some of your neighbors right behind you are here tonight, so. On West Troy Street, I think Sally's here.
I don't have any cards on me.
Oh, you don't? That'd be great.
Sure. If anybody, if anybody wants to put their email on that sheet back there, I'd be happy to send a follow-up and make the connection.
Thank you. And I'm sure Laura's probably got contact information for people who contact. Is our council member still here? We already, I'm sorry, Patricia, we already did comments. I think if they come back with a site plan, we'll have a lot more to talk about. Have a good night. All right, Justin. We are moving to item number six, our master plan update. And you know, one of our, um, uh, members of our steering committee was here. Uh, Council Commissioner Foster is our liaison to the, uh, the steering committee, but she's not, uh, unfortunately not here this evening. Um, so we will.
Yeah.
Let you and then is Eric Swayze? No, okay. I'm gonna say if she wanted to add anything, but you started last. Get away.
Sure. So, uh, not a major update this evening, but, um, wanted to just, you know, let people know where we're at. So for people that may not be familiar, the city is, you know, officially launching the master plan update process. The master plan is something that communities in Michigan are required to update roughly every five years. Um, it generally helps guide land use decisions. Um, and it doesn't necessarily predict all of the future, but there are a lot of recommendations and, and, and planning items that go with that. And so we've really been kind of just doing in data collection mode and early planning. So, but we did just have our first steering committee meeting. I don't know if you remember, but, um, we did have a, um, you know, did have people from different commissions and boards, um, helped join us on the steering committee. But we also did have a public lottery that did select three members, um, that applied and Lynn, who was here, is one of them. So, um, she's been very helpful, um, throughout the process. And, um, so, so essentially, we're at the point where we had our first steering committee with Smith Group. So they're the consultant helping us guide the process. Um, and so this process also includes a update to the Parks and Recreation Plan, but also for the first time ever, a climate action plan. Um, so, uh, I would say that's pretty forward-thinking for a community of our size, but also just for a Michigan community. So, uh, kudos to Aaron for leading that effort. And so, you know, uh, we do have a project page here, um, that, you know, we're trying to keep updated with information and Aaron did a good update of this, um, this week. Um, but we also have an email signup list, so I'm just encouraging people, um, you know, to check out this page. Um, and also, we do have an email signup where we're, um, we were at Broadway and the Burbs and got some, um, you know, good FaceTime with folks and get, get a few signups that way. And so looking to do that more at some of the events coming up. Um, but you'll see some more flyers around town and stuff like that for people to sign up. But, um, I won't go into the whole, you know, preamble of everything, but, um, you know, really the master plan is that opportunity for the entire community to participate. So it happens every five years. Last time, um, in 2015, 16, 17, it kind of blew over a few, a few years, but, um, got a lot of great feedback and participation. We're looking for more this time. The master plan really does connect all these other actions and plans that are going around town. Everything from the, the skate park to the city council strategic plan was built a lot of, from the recommendations from the master plan. And so it includes, you know, even the inclusive housing, housing policy and plan and the master, uh, Ferndale Movement Plan that was just updated. So, um, it really ties to a lot of projects throughout the community. So, um, just wanted to give people a heads up. We are, um, holding a, um, couple of official events. Um, so September 15th, instead of a normal planning commission meeting, we'll be doing a joint meeting with the city council and planning commission, um, to get some feedback on some of the key projects that have happened since the last plan, but also, um, you know, uh, conversations that come up at every meeting, parking, development, um, climate action and equitable parks planning. So we're gonna focus it on those, um, um, specific items and, you know, pick your brains essentially. Um, it is a meeting that's open to the public. It'll probably be run similar to the city council strategic plan workshop that was done, I think, earlier this year, maybe last year, how we do our budget workshops as well. So open to the public, absolutely time for people to give feedback then, but really focused on gathering these two groups, our boards and, or council that don't interact quite as often. Um, and then in October, we are planning what we're calling the Community Summit. Um, it is likely, we're finalizing the date, but likely in mid-October, we're trying to balance between Pride and Pig and Whiskey and all the other events going on. So we're, it may be a one-day event, maybe a couple days event where we focus on, you know, two or three specific topics that'll be, will probably come out of that joint, um, planning commission meeting. So, um, right now, we're just, you know, really starting to get people involved. And so anybody who signs up for this email list, um, you know, we'll send them updates when they're available. But that is generally where we are at. And so we have a lot more frequently asked questions about the process on this page, but, um, really wanted to just get to this engagement, um, schedule. And so, you know, you can kind of see here, generally, you know, the goal would be in next June to have got all this feedback, get some feedback on the draft plan and hopefully get adoption. But, you know, I mean, we're, we're committed to, you know, taking the time that the community needs. Last time we did go over by a couple of months. And, um, it is a lot to do all three of these plans in one. Most communities, especially one our size, don't do that. But, you know, Ferndale, we're ambitious, so. But, um, so encourage people to reach out to Aaron and I and Lisa Bryant from the, uh, the Epperture Directory and the Parks and Recreation Department. Um, we're kind of leading that from the staff side and, you know, we've, we've had good feedback from, uh, our steering committee so far. And so they're kind of the first test and then we bring it to the rest of the community. So that is essentially where we're at. I also included a, um, in the planning commission year-end review, just an update of where we're at with all of the different action items from the last plan. Um, and we've been busy over those past five years, so.
That report. Any questions for Justin before we move to?
One question, if I may, Chair. Um, and Greg, you can probably answer this as well. I know if you guys are trying to do some community engagement and trying to aim around October, would it be possible to have a booth at Pride or set up somewhere during the Pride Festival when everyone's there? Just to at least offer the opportunity. I know, I know it's tough not to, it wouldn't replace the overall summit, but again, more exposure and more opportunities is always better, especially like you said, right now you're looking to find the weekend between all those. And it, I probably won't plan going out between all those weekends. So then you won't actually miss a lot of people who are avoiding that one weekend that's a downtime kind of.
And I should say too, the Community Summit is not gonna be the only big event. There will be, um, you know, other outreaches. We're doing some, making some sort of DIY kits where, you know, your own neighborhood group could lead a meeting and, you know, we take the feedback. And so we're trying to spread things around. But we're, we're trying to get a booth at any event that we're, that will allow us to, so.
I can speak only for Pride because I work on it. Um, there currently are no available booths for Pride. It's completely sold out. But that being said, I don't know if Pride would be a very good event for this to be at because so many of the people that come aren't Ferndale.
True.
DIY art fair, I think that's a good, um, event to be at. Um, I don't even think Pig and Whiskey. I think that's such a huge out, outside of Ferndale, you know, like Dream Cruise. Dream Cruise would not be a good location, a good event to be at because it's, you know, 95% non-Ferndale people.
Well, potentially though, I mean, if you guys are able to work with like the Rust Belt with their community spaces, they don't have anything going on. You know, you may still get visitors coming to the community, but at least you can kind of have a central space and kind of plug it. So if people are walking around the festival, they know if they go to Rust Belt and they can kind of interact with the city as well, so.
Yeah, I would encourage things like, um, the Nine on Nine, um, events, uh, Saturday 2 o'clock at Shiffer Park. You know, that's more of a local community event where you'd probably get a lot more, you know, people within Ferndale than.
Yeah. And we're trying to balance too, because, so Broadway and the Burbs was a good test for us in that we did get residents. We also got people that just love Ferndale and come to visit. And they gave us some feedback too that was actually helpful as an outsider. I mean, of course.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm happy to have non-resident, but like frequent visitor feedback is a good thing.
Nobody wanted to sign up for the email list that was out of Ferndale, which is fine.
Fine. Any other questions on the master plan? Um, we've got an update on, uh, Planning Commission Year-end Report 2020?
Um, yeah, I'll keep this brief. I just wanted to, there's not a real full-on presentation, but, you know, 2020, we, I, again, appreciate the flexibility, uh, staff. We were juggling leave and stuff like that. And obviously the pandemic and people were flexible Zoom meetings, so appreciate that. Um, mostly wanted to just note that we try and do this every year. Obviously a little delayed, but I think we were earlier than last year. But, um, trying, this also helps. But trying, this also helps us can maintain our redevelopment-ready certification through the state of Michigan. And they just want to make sure that we're holding meetings as scheduled and according to the zoning enabling act and all that. But one of the items on that list is trainings that commissioners have done back in 2020. So if you have any, please let us know, we'll add to that. But mostly just wanted to say, take a look. If you can get back to us before the next meeting, then we will make any changes and send that off to the state, so.
Anything from Fishers this evening?
Through the chair, one small kind of edit. I'm not on the membership list, I know I took over someone else's terms. I don't know if I need to be on this particular one, but I did start in 2020, so I just don't know if that needs to be documented or not.
We'll, we'll add it, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. This from Council?
I may be stealing your thunder or, or.
I got no thunder.
Taking you by surprise.
Oh, goodie.
Mayor Piana has sent you and I an email.
Oh, yeah, about the transit plan.
About mobility-oriented development on Woodward. Did you want to, I don't know if you want to talk.
I, no, actually, I hadn't forwarded it to Justin yet. And the mayor asked if, if the commission was aware of, I'm sure Justin is, of some of the planning that had been done as a part of the RTAs, the Regional Transit Authorities, Woodward corridor planning. I know Justin from the city side was a part of that, and I imagine that Justin probably was from a work side. But I was trying to get a sense from the mayor of, like, is this maybe something the master planning steering committee should be aware of? Or is this really relevant to, to the planning commission broadly? So trying to figure out, and I'm happy to forward it to everybody, but I wanted to try to like distill out what exactly it was she wanted us to sort of zero in on.
And I can just chime in briefly. That study was done right around we did Ferndale Moves. So a lot of, some of, some of that stuff from the recommendations, I'm happy to send the study out. I think it's on ferndalemoves.com somewhere. But, but it was incorporated in the plan. But really, what I got from it was, you know, a lot of the land use policies and transit planning and like bike and pedestrian and accessibility infrastructure that we've been doing is a model that other communities should be taking. So, but I will send that study out for folks.
Thank you.
So kind of along that line, so right now, MDOT is going through the review of the, the lane reduction on Woodward. We'll probably know at some point when it's going to be approved. At that point, how much input or flexibility do we have after they say it's a go to actually impact any change? Like, if we want to make some small, you know, or moderate changes to the plan that was submitted, you know, like increase a parking space or, you know, I don't know.
Sure. So at this point, so we do have some control, but it is primarily in MDOT's hands being, is there right away. So we submitted this initial concept plan back in last summer at this point, and then got some feedback from it. MDOT did some traffic analysis and things like that, some adjustments were made to the plan, which I imagine we will be able to share with the community around Labor Day.
Their adjustments, you mean?
Yeah, and, you know, related to traffic engineering and stuff like that, but I think it was a good compromise. So the next steps really are to share that, what those changes were. And so I imagine there'll be a city news story about that and, you know, share all the plans for that in time to give feedback. And then, you know, in order to move forward, council will review it, which was noted back then anyway. But council would have to pass a resolution one more time to say, hey, we accept this plan. And then it would go off to the next, there's essentially two more stops at the Michigan Department of Transportation level to decide if they will approve it, so.
Sort of happening this fall, so for us to be aware of for this fall.
Still have a few back and forths of approval. Like, they may come back in a couple of weeks and say, okay, we prove it at this level, it's going to come back to council. It doesn't come back to the planning commission?
No, I mean, it, it didn't originally. I mean, there was, I think I've given updates and things like that. We don't usually get into the nitty-gritty details at this level. I mean, of course, I want, I will take everyone's feedback. But I think that with the way the timing would be with the state's deadlines and stuff like that, it's sort of tough because we are, we are picking back onto their resurfacing project. And so we've had to kind of work within their, their boundaries and timelines and such. So I expect an update around Labor Day.
Okay, great, thanks.
You didn't surprise me or shock me. Try harder. No, don't, no, don't, I lie. I don't think I have anything this evening, commission items. Will we have agendas? I know our next meeting is like the day after Labor Day, right?
The one, I mean, two days, yeah.
Two days? And do you anticipate that we'll have agenda items?
There are two that I can think of right now.
Okay, I'll follow up with the, the mayor about the appointment of our ninth commissioner. I know she's met with applicants, so I'm not sure what the, what the timeline is. But, you know, we were just at corn tonight, so I want to make sure for the fall that we've got our, our full complement of commissioners. Nothing else?
Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I forgot that the planning commission was the first week. I will be on vacation next week, so I will not be here.
I did see that email.
I thought I included you, okay.
I think most, most other folks are like back after Labor Day, so that makes sense. We just inverted it. All right, thank you, everybody. We've got, also then, the joint meeting on 9:15 is on one of our regular meeting nights, so it's not an additional meeting.
Okay.
The joint meeting with the council. So we will adjourn at, I'm glasses.
9:10.
9:10. Sorry?
9:08.
9:08, thank you, City Clerk. Have a good evening.
Thanks, everyone.
Justin, did Eli give you, I think this is what was in our packet, and then he attached a resume?
I don't think I have that second page.
I just want to make sure you've got a copy. Yep, exactly, perfect.
Yeah, it's not like, oh.
Perfect.
I know, I was just like, oh, my God.
I think we can.
He is the guy.
I think this was in the packet.
Right.
That's why I saved it for you. We'll recycle.
Maybe, maybe. I don't know, I, they can, they can play next to us.
Sorry for my random question. I just like, I kept seeing the brown. Oh, and then when I finally.
I'm worried about the connection.
Oh. How about the curves? I know they hit the roof structure and that was bomb. Oh, absolutely.
Well, I guess I was trying to get at.
It has different setbacks.
It's not our concern.
Right, and I think sometimes it's the public comment.
Yeah, so I have routes that were sticking out and then they came back.
It's the dynamic of the conversation.
Okay, well, that's fine, but then, yeah, like, when they were coming by with their big trucks and it was just like. So then I'm like, oh, so.
It's a condition.
I like to be home tomorrow, so.
Right, sure.
Thank you, I just want to say like.
Well, see, and I, I found interesting that.
Okay, I'm just gonna.
It's not profitable as a three-story apartment, but it could be just as profitable as a two-story hotel. Like, that's where, that's where, as the, the more explanation is why I'm like, there are just a bunch of Airbnbs then.
Yeah.
And then that's where I got the concern about the ordinance, I'm like. Wait, so is that not the issue then, that all Airbnbs?
Thanks.
I'm totally with you on that enforcement question. Like, Mike is basically dumping all of the, which is.
Yeah, yeah.
I think he definitely needs to come back. We've done the contactless entry hotels in Mount Pleasant and Adrian, which are like not equipped to be fielding random. Right, day and night, right? I wanted him to like do some research and come back.
I also kind of wanted, I don't, I was thinking about this as we were asking for more research. Is there any way that we can get, like, I mean, I don't know, like, get the names ahead of time so we can, we don't get the Rose Collar classes research?
Right, no, I agree.
Because otherwise, you see, you were going to get, everything's perfect.
But maybe that's like a staff assignment.
We've got two operator names now, which is good.
Yeah, exactly.
You have what?
Two different operator names that he uses.
That we can try to.
Well, and that's why I asked him when he said the one downtown. Right, he, they have a different service, and I'm like, wait, hold on a second, so he built it and then they leased it out and took it over? I'm like, is that not going to be the same?
He does, he does both. Those are existing residential units, because that's, that's common too, where a developer will develop an existing residential development. Are about like, these 10 units we're going to just, this contactless.
Yeah, but then what's the difference with that and the Airbnb?
But the thing is, when it comes down to the difference between Airbnb, what is the, what's the difference between, where you draw the line between residential and lodging?
Exactly, that's, that's what I was trying to lose you, because really, it's like, okay, so you have a coffee shop, which really won't necessarily be much for the community. Yeah, community can go to it, but we have other coffee shops around there, so really, it's going to be the people who are staying in there won't be the ones going to it.
And is it going to be a contactless coffee shop?
And then who knows if it's going to be that? I know, I know, well, do you know, I was going to ask.
Not rezoning, like, you gotta try harder.
I was going to ask him, how is the hunt for a coffee shop for the motorauma going? Because that's exactly what was proposed when that was changed.
And how was that mural on that wall?
Exactly, exactly, he was still have the billboard on top as well, you know, it's fading.
I didn't want to be a giant dick, but I'm seeing the little, I'm like, promise me, and I'm seeing the little fancy little.
Yeah.
Plaid thing on the walls, like, promise.
I see an updated motorauma.
That's one that he sold, right? So Mike does, he operates and he builds himself, so he still operates any time of it. Held that, but sold.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't realize he sold it.
Well, and I think.
Or maybe the new owner doesn't realize, he still owns it.
Well, yeah, and then, and yeah, and that's the thing is like, you know, and he may not be the one to foot the motoraum, but again, what changes where, let's say they're having trouble renting it out, do you just switch it to Airbnb?
Well, the thing is like, what, like, if they were to say we're, we're going to be a giant. Apartment complex.
Unless we weren't specific enough.
Have their corporation rent out every single apartment in there and then sign them up for Airbnbs, how would that be any different than what?
Exactly, the, the business hopes, business hopes.
Somebody's already cracked this case though, I mean, other municipalities, but they're already like, like addressed or.
I know that we like to aggressively try out things before, before they're vetted. And I know that's kind of what they ride ourselves on, but I don't know if I really want.
I don't think we have to be, I think other communities have defined, like drawn the line between what is hotel and lodging and what is.
And I don't know if we've done that. In the, in the ordinance of.
Is that something you could ask Dan?
I can, you pull up the ordinance, yeah, and then I'll just send it to everybody.
That'd be really helpful.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Because I, I mean, I can't ask Dan to do something, but you could ask Dan to do something.
No, I can just pull up the ordinance and send it to you.
Well, but in terms of some research, like Brittany's saying. Right.
Oh, yeah.
Put a fine point on it. Right, and I think that's what we need to be able to enforce. Right, because we can pontificate with a developer standing there being like, what the heck? Or we can say, like, here's precedence, you know, tell us how or why we should.
Think there's going to be any different.
Pivot away from precedent.
Or maybe the same, you know.
Well, and also too, I mean, when it comes down to it, bending over backwards to, to, so they can.
For a spot rezoning.
For a spot rezoning.
That was my point.
In the same, in the same, has no properties as he said, so.
That's the beginning and end of the conversation. But talk about the C2, how is the spot rezoning?
They don't want it based on.
Well, because, because that's.
What is being built on the site and not necessarily the use? And what is being built is within MX2, right? Like, that's my point, is like, other than some small setback issues in the mayor. Maybe a three-story building.
Well, unless it's only changes.
I think a lot of times when the public comment gets bogged down in things that are by right, per the master plan.
I know.
And like, I don't, I appreciate the public comments, but.
I was like, like, making it justifiable.
Already, the, the master plan says that this is by right. Let's pivot the conversation to what the question is.
I'll take this on Tim Horns any day. Give her a Tim Horns and build this right along the frontage, you have your entryway off both side streets. I'll take that any day.
I agree. Off of, instead of Tim Hortons.
Instead of the Tim Hortons property, because it's like, it's a solid rectangular block. There's an empty lot right behind it, the developer could also develop into an additional duplex. You have your in and out of the garage right behind there, you have commercial space all the way down. Build three stories, you're good to go.
But let's also like.
Yeah, why doesn't he buy the Tim Hortons lot?
I guess, I guess it's not the.
That's why I said, like, Jordan might use it as a stop. Might be available, but there's a whole, that's a whole economic development conversation that I think.
And it's not, it's not the cheapest lot, like, this is a very cheap lot, I think, if you're.
Because contaminated.
He's going to have to invest a lot of money to help that.
To clean it up and then.
You know, settle up for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
He, he's throwing hail Marys, he's like, if I can make this work, this is going to be a cash cow, like someone said. But he's trying to see if he can make, make a cheap block, I mean, again, it's not a hotel, it's Airbnb's.
Yeah. And I, and I.
I don't know if you're going to go back for them.
I, I mean, I think, I mean, Mike already owns businesses here involved, so like, I think we'll keep hearing from Michael, but the, the, the use isn't, I guess it's.
I don't like business.
For me, it's, it's the, it's the sighting and the design, it's not the use of the height.
I agree.
I don't really care about the, the use. For me, it's what are you going to build there? Am I going to look at a blank wall for the next 50 years because?
Well, the thing is, I, I think though that we should care about how it's used, though. Yeah, I mean, I know that that was brought up at the meeting that we shouldn't care about how it's used, but.
No, I don't care, I, we should care. I, I hope they got on my mind.
But like, I mean, I just don't want them to create something that all of a sudden.